Planning Board Meeting for October 20th, 2020. Um, this is being held pursuant to the governor's orders allowing for um such meetings to be conducted via Zoom. This is also being recorded.
Oh, it looks like.
If anybody else is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know.
It's for our guy.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
Yeah.
So for the folks who just come in, um, if you could, just go into the chat function and sign in with your name and address. That would be great to allow us to have a basically a um sign in sheet. All right, uh, seven o'clock Town Planner's Report. Alan?
This guy.
I'll take my garment.
Uh, the past two weeks, uh, I had, I had a field meeting with George from Xantos Pizza in regards to removing and rebuilding residential building on his property. It's to the, it's to the south of him. And he's possibly, he's possibly looking at it for a mixed use. Uh, retail on the first floor, residential on the second floor. So we met outside.
I don't know how to get it back.
Outside on the picnic table to, to keep
How do I get rid of this thing?
Everybody happy.
With the chat?
Went over the particulars.
Last week they were whaling.
If you could, please just uh either mute yourself or we just got to make sure there's only one person speaking at a time. Thank you.
Uh, so what the first thing he has to do is he has to get a, go before the zoning board of appeals to, he's going to build the face of the building where it is now, but it's going to be a little larger. So he's got to, he's going to go to the ZBA and get all those approvals before he comes in for a uh formal application of planning board. I also had conversations with Mrs. Pritti and the use of the property that she owns on Granville Road. It's on the south side of Granville Road, basically starting a little west of where the Solik Farm is. It's, it's a large farming, farming area and um we, we approved it on A and R. There's two lots that were approved. And now she's exploring, they, her and her sister have decided they're, they wanted to hold on to some of it, but now they're going to open up the whole thing, possibly get a couple of state lots and um. So it's interesting. She's very, very, very nice to talk to him. And I also had similar conversations with the owner on the property on More Vinny Hill Road going south to the Connecticut border on the east side of the road. Uh, that we, they did do one A and R lot for the existing farmhouse. And now she's looking at the uh to do additional A and R lots or, or possibly sell it to somebody who wants to do a subdivision uh parallel to More Vinny Road. Also, we, we have, we've had a request that I think I'm going to, I'm going to do this short because this, there's a request for an A and R on a 14 acre parcel on College Highway. The land was excluded from the Greens East as far as calculations. And it was a, it's a vacant piece of land. And we always thought that it was possibly going to go, come in for a zone change. And what has happened is Mr. Wally has, has a, is in the process of purchasing it. And the two attorneys who are representing each client, they want a clarification. And they actually, I, I, Megan sent everybody a copy of that A and R. And basically what it is, it's, it's an existing parcel. It's not part of the subdivision. And they just want a disclaimer because they want to get title insurance on it. So that's coming up right after my planner's report. I've received additional information for review of the proposed Verizon cell tower project. The items have been shared and added to the town webpage. And that's it.
Okay, um. One second, I just want to rotate this file. We can look at that A and R.
They've been waiting for a while, so I tried to tried to accommodate everybody we can.
Okay.
That particular parcel, it has two fingers of open space that, that come off of College Highway and go up into the basically people are familiar, there's a rock that runs through the golf course and there's a little um golf course bridge.
Hold on one second, Alan. Let me put up, let me put up that map. Just give me one minute. It was, when it came, it was just flipped, so I wanted to flip it back.
Alan, are we talking the west side?
No, it's on the east side. If you're going, if you're going towards Westfield, it's going to be on your right hand side.
Just pass the little, okay.
You, you know where they had the snack shops for the uh golfers to get something to drink?
Yep.
That, that area and actually Mr. Wally has gone in and he's cut a lot of debris down. And they, but they want to try to formalize that, that sale. I think Michael's going to put it on the screen for you.
Yeah, sorry. Hold on a minute, just.
Actually got a copy of it, yeah, I'm looking at it.
Give me a minute.
It's a, it's a large parcel of land before you get to Dr. Waltz's property.
Right. So Alan, looking at the property, the snack shack would be
To the bottom of the page. Where that uh open space land is.
Yep. Okay.
All right, can you see that? Is that working, Alan?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, um. So go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt you if you have more to.
Yeah, so we, we originally thought at one time it was, there were going to be six homes there fronting College Highway. Yep. And then the, the Ferraris, a day what they did is they pulled that out and they just kept it as a vacant parcel. And we thought that they might be looking to change it to what's called a BR zone. But it's, it's been sitting sterile. And uh Mr. Wally, what, he wants to purchase it and I believe he's going to use it in the agricultural preservation. It kind of ties into his, his large farm just to the south, which is off, which is off of the map.
Right.
So he's, if you go by, you could see there's trees cut down and there's some um burning debris uh to be cleared. So the two attorneys, one representing Mr. Wally and one representing the Ferrari, they um they've come to an agreement to do this A and R to, to solidify it once and for all.
So Alan, on this, I'm just having trouble with this map a little bit. What parcels are being combined here?
There's nothing, there's no parcel combined. What it is, it's a residual from the east side of the, of the, of the road. It was never, it was never, it was never subdivided and it was never formally brought before the meeting.
So what are we doing an A and R for?
To, to uh anchor, to anchor it and, and there's a, there's a nomenclature of the corner. Which basically says the parcel remaining land of Fiore Realty is not a part of the flexible subdivision plan in book page. And is not, and is subject to the provisions, requirements of the flex. And uh they, they want to get title insurance, one, the one, the title insurance representing the buyer. Thought it could be cleared up a little bit. So that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, Michael, I'm, I'm here too. I don't know if you can hear me, but this is Jason Fiori. Um, one of four feet, yeah, one of four Feeding Hills Road, so Fiore Realty Holdings.
Yep.
So we've been in the process of trying to sell this property for about three months and uh John Wally's attorney, Jim Donahue, has been running through, who was trying to get title insurance on it because for whatever reason, they actually are considering this part of the development for whatever reason. Uh, it's not, never was intended to be. Uh, but when we tried to actually go through the title process, it kind of ran some red flags for them and they weren't able to insure it. So we weren't able to actually close on a sale. So the easiest way to accommodate that is to just basically list it as an A and R, go through this process, pile up fee with you guys and list it as an A, uh, an A and R lot and just get rid of it. And that way it's on book as a separate piece of parcel land and, and go through the process of getting a title insurance. Get a title for it. At least that's the way all the lawyers have been, you know, the 15, thousands of dollars of the lawyer fees I've been paying for the last three months.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I I guess I
Like putting two pairs of rubber boots on.
It kind of makes sense. I, I have, I'm not sure I've ever seen an A and R used in that manner. Um. But I guess it makes sense. Um.
The, the issue I think is part, part of the issue is, is that in the town registry, in, as far as taxes go, it's still lumped into the same amount of land that is associated with the Greens of Southwick. So like when you go to the town, uh, you know, the assessor's office, it's still part of the 74 acres with the land is that is associated with the east. So I think if we do this, we could tear it out of that assessor's domain, put it in its own parcel at an A and R, maybe that'll separate it in a way which is easily transferable.
Oh, true, because you haven't sold anything yet.
Not at all.
Well, nothing has separated by deed. Um.
And we actually have two lawyers that are agreeing to it, which is a rarity.
Um. Okay. Um.
And it has, it has, it has more than enough frontage, it has more than enough square footage. So it meets all of the uh, in an R20 zone.
Alan, could you just do me a, you were reading before from that and I just, it, it's difficult for me to read this.
Sure. Basically, it said the parcel remaining land of Fiore Realty Holdings LLC is not part of the flex subdivision plan shown in the book of plans. 387 pages 30 through 33. Is not subject to the provisions and requirements of the flex subdivision plan. And is not subject to the covenant in lieu of bond recorded in book 23307, page 505. And is not subject to the special permit recorded in book 22859, page 256. And has amended in the book 23039, page 74. And it's, and it's stamped by um Mark Schutz from um the Levick Associates.
All right. I mean, I guess what I'd say is just to kind of get this moving along, um is assuming that that is simply referring to documents that are um you know, related to the subdivision only, I have, I have no problem, you know, we can just double check it and make sure, but assuming those are subdivision related covenants and
Yeah, they, they, they are. I, I went to the registry and researched everything and
Okay.
It's just, they're, they're just trying to clarify that parcel for Mr. Wally.
Yep, so that's fine. Um, I, I don't see a problem with that. Anybody on the board have any issues with that?
Alan, you said it's R20 zone?
Yes. But it's, it's more than adequate. I mean.
Um. Okay. All right, uh, anybody have any issue with that on the board? Any other questions or comments?
What's happening with the open space, Alan, on the north end of that?
That opens, that open space continues into the actual Greens East. Uh, when you come in, when you come off the Tannery Road, there's a, there's a couple cul-de-sacs in the road. And that's, if you look at your, if you look at the bottom right, you can see one of the lots for the um for the
Right. Okay, got it here, yep.
The open space, their open space, there's access, there's two accesses from the subdivision that people would be allowed to go walk down passively to look at nature and kids can throw rocks in the water and wood, you know, it's, it's passive, passive. And it's, and it's actually a good buffer for those residents from the College Highway process.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, so do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps makes a motion to accept this A and R.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Richard, Richard, I'll sing a little second.
All right, so we'll do a roll call vote since we're on Zoom. Uh, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
Uh.
David Sutton.
Is Dave Sutton here?
He's there.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Did you say aye?
Yes, I said aye.
And Jessica's Jessica's here also.
I can't speak on A and R, so can I?
No. So, all right, so we're all set with that. Um. So I'm assuming we need to come down at some point and sign this. Um.
Right, what Megan, what Megan can do, and I, I had talked to, talked to the attorney, is we have a picnic table and we also have a cover over it. So Megan or, or me, if I'm, if I'm there, uh, we could just, we can just get the necessary signatures.
Okay. All right, so everybody who voted, just please arrange to get down there and get that signed um as soon as you can.
Okay.
Um. All right, I, I don't, um. Let me just make sure. Anything else on here? Um. No, okay. So, um, well, first of all, is there any public comments that anybody who um um wants to raise that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, so before we get into the cell phone hearing continuation, I just want to quickly see whether we can resolve the open space issue with the Greens. Uh, what is it, Greens East, right?
Yes.
Um, so they are trying to work through the conservation restriction uh and the language that's contained in there when they went through the actual decision. Um, they weren't a hundred percent sure whether public access to the open space on Greens East was going to be allowed or not. Um, and so they have turned it back over to the board for input on that issue. Um, so what I wanted to see was, I guess a combination of memories and um opinions about open space on the Greens East. Now my, you know, I, I don't know if this I got, I gotta I guess I'd have to sit down with the plans a little bit more. Maybe Alan can better inform me, but I think if there was going to be open space, it was going to be basically parking allowed where that snack shack was. Um. Which would now be on John Wally's land if it goes through, is that right?
No, it's, it's, it lies within that one, if you look at the, off the bottom of the screen.
Yep.
There is a an 80.70 width. That's kind of crosshatch.
Okay.
And that, that's an area that could easily support seven cars.
Okay.
Likewise, if you go to the top of the page, there's an, there's an equal uh 80 foot parcel which could support another seven cars.
Okay.
Seems like, seems like it would be adequate if people so desire to go into this open space.
All right.
There's, there's no parking lot on the subdivision itself. There are two accesses off cul-de-sacs. And in town, you're not allowed to park within the town right away anyway. So this would be an alternate that could be explored.
Okay.
And Mr. Begland, our town, our attorney
All right.
Could do that necessary work.
Okay. And the other thing to consider, having spoken to the Conservation Commission, I went to their meeting last night and heard what they had to say. Um, is, and I, I don't, I sort of minimize this. Um, so I don't know if Jason Fiori is still on there.
I'm still here, yeah.
Okay.
I'm still here.
Um. So what they have told me um is that when they went through a walkthrough on Greens East, it was represented to them that there would be public access uh on that development, on that side of it. Um, you know, with the idea of being able to park in those areas off of College Highway. Um, so, you know, with that having been said, I, I, you know, that concerns me a little bit if that was represented. Um. You know, and it didn't, that conversation didn't necessarily make its way in the planning board hearing. I, I, you know, I'd still be inclined to sort of hold them to that to that um representation. But let me just ask the board members first and I'll get to the, to the um developer. Um. Board members, what are your thoughts or what are your memories about that issue coming up?
I don't recall the issue being discussed at great length. I think we should be consistent with what we decided for the west side. Uh, there is no requirement in the flexible residential development bylaw that the open space should be open or has to be open. It's not required to be open to the public. So to me, it's the homeowners association that would have to make that decision based on liability. And apparently there is some material that's been written on liability of landowners uh for general public use of their property. So uh, anyway, I just wonder what we had in the decision for the west side.
So here's my um, two things on that. One is, you know, I think the west side's different. You have to kind of look at both sides. Yeah, with what they offer. I mean, I'm not sure that there's either parking or real areas to you know, hike or do whatever on the west side. So I, I think you have to sort of treat one separate from the other. Uh, the west, I believe, was uh, the conservation restriction does not allow public access. Um. The other part about it, just to give some background, uh, is that I'm not sure liability is an issue. I assume that there'd have to be some kind of insurance on that property in and of itself. Um, even if it's being used by the community, it's by the residents right there. Um. Uh, by whoever owns it, um, it's not going to change if it's opened up to the public at large. But additionally, um, you know, there certainly is public access allowed in these types of developments as part of a condition, on a condition, on a conservation restriction. Um, I mean, just to give some uh, history, if you go back and look, you know, a couple of the recent ones have not had it. The Ranch has not had it. Amberleaf hasn't had public access. Um, you know, like I said, the Greens West, but um others such as
Noble, Noble Steed doesn't have that.
Noble Steed does not. Farren does have public access. Um. Pearl Brook does not have, APR doesn't have public access. Um, I'm trying to think of which other one, there was one other one that did have public access. Um, Farren and, oh, Coyote Glen does have public access in the, in the conservation restriction. Um, those are the ones that I could find at least. So there is some, you know, it is an option. You can ask for public access. It's basically under the idea of a public benefit and a benefit to the town who is allowing a developer to um, use the flexible residential development uh format and uh giving something back to the town. It, to be allowed to do that. So, you know, the, the, just keep those in mind. Um. When you're talking about liability and you're talking about, you know, the two different, two different parcels. Uh, anybody else have anything?
Mike, is this taxable property? Is this town property or who actually owns the property?
The HOA pays the taxes on the land. Uh, to bring it up too, I mean, they could tell you that from an insurance writer standpoint, from a liability, if you access or identify this as plant for public use, you're going to double or triple the insurance cost. That's just life.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I, I don't, I, I'm sure that may very well be the case. I, I don't know what we're talking about for numbers, uh, you know, but uh, that may very well be the case. Um, I, I you know, realistically, I'm not sure there's going to be a ton of public access going on that property. Um, I, I, but I don't know. It, it may very well be. Um, I think there's probably better properties to be hiking or doing whatever else in town than, than that, but um.
Agreed.
Uh, anybody else have any comments?
Michael, could I, could I make a quick comment? This is Dennis Clark from the Conservation Commission.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I just would like the uh planning board to realize that if you don't make this public and you make it private, you're going to be asking the town of Southwick, the town of Southwick Conservation Commission and its taxpayers to be holding a conservation restriction that we would have to monitor that for a private development and enforce it for a private development on our limited resources. I could see the Conservation Commission being happy to do that if it was for the town and the town's residents and the taxpayers, but if it's for a private development, they should uh pay a uh land trust and probably up to $20,000 to $30,000 to hold a conservation restriction on the property. Um, it doesn't uh, it's not doing the town any benefit as far as the people. If you restrict it for, say the seniors want to go out there for a walk, I'm sure there wouldn't be a lot of people on the properties. But we did look into the liability issues and there are statutes in place that protect landowners from any, any people that are on their property for passive recreation. There are specific statutes in place. I sent that to Marcus and Michael. And that has been in place for quite a few years. So the liability, I don't think is an issue, but as far as getting something back for the town and it has perfect access right off of College Highway, so you're not going to be infringing on anybody's driveways or cul-de-sacs. Um, I just wanted to, I want the uh planning board to realize that it would be a benefit and the Conservation Commission would be happy to hold the conservation restriction if it was for the town. If it's for a private subdivision, I don't think they're going to be so amenable to uh holding the conservation restriction. Thank you for your time.
Uh, well, I mean, I I guess I'd just say that they do, right, in, in other ones. I mean, they do in Amberleaf, they do um in Pearl Brook, they do in
Or did, where did you get that information that they aren't uh, they aren't for public access?
Um, by looking at the conservation restriction. It's filed with the Registry of Deeds. I can give you the fucking page if you want, but
Attorney Beglane, from what I understand, Attorney Beglane said it's ambiguous. It could go either way. It doesn't state that they, is private and it doesn't say that it's public.
I'm not talking about the one for the Greens East. I'm talking about for the other developments that I just referenced.
Even when The ranch golf course was supposed to be public. That was absolutely made for public, for right away, for public.
Well, he, here's my issue. We're the planning board. We have no signatory power on these conservation restrictions. Every one of these conservation restrictions, including for the ranch, including for Amberleaf, including for uh Noble, there's not one for Noble Steed that I could find for the Greens West. Um, all of those were signed by the Conservation Commission.
So Under the understanding that they were for public use.
But but my problem, I guess, then is that they're not necessarily being read because they say that the conservation restriction does not grant to the general public any right to enter upon the premises. So I, I don't, I mean, it says that specifically in the conservation restriction. So again, I don't want to get too much, but it, it, just the idea that the town would have to hold something that they don't necessarily want to. They do it for a bunch of other developments right now. Um, and I think that's pretty clear when you look at the documents, but you know.
Wrong will make right either. Just because they made that, it was done in the year before, doesn't mean that it should be done. There's, there's quite a few things we need to work on as far as the flexible subdivision bylaws go, but here's something we could uh correct immediately. And uh, we would uh ask the uh planning board to please look at it in that respect. I mean, why would you put two access, why would you put two legs onto College Highway? You think people from the subdivision are going to want to walk from the open space onto College Highway? It doesn't, that doesn't seem to make any sense, does it? Why are those access points there if it weren't for people to access it from, not to go to Why are those access points there if it weren't for people to access it from, not to go to College Highway? There's a footpath, there's a, there's a bridge already, a footbridge going there, so.
Jason, do you have any memory of the walkthrough with conservation as to whether there was any representation about public access?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was never privy to that. I was probably a Rob Levesque conversation. My only gripe with that is, is adding it to this, at this point of the game would be during the comments, those were never made as far as I can recall. So when we did these finalized definitive plans, you know, every department had their, you know, comments that they made. I don't recall offhand that there was specific comments requiring access to the open space. That would have been part of the plan to begin with. I think adding it at this point, which is technical, I mean, as is, what I can tell you is even for the, the Greens of Southwick West, I have the homeowners there not even really wanting to even put in that access off the land. So I have the people on that between lots seven and six that are really kind of fighting against the idea of even putting in that open access path that we had on the plan. So we still intend to do it because it's on the plan. But even they say like, you know, they're not going to take care of it, I think. So not that I can force anyone to do anything when we're outside the picture, but I do know that most of these individuals in the house, I'm assuming that will still carry over to the East. So they're not really interested in having a bunch of people access the open space, but, you know, what am I going to do? You guys tell me what to do, I'll do it. But at the end of the day, I really do think that this should have been shored up during the definitive plan approval.
Okay, anybody, any other board members have any comments? Okay. Does any board member think we need more information? Or do you want to make a decision about whether to allow public access tonight?
I think I'll check with Rob Levesque and see what the original deal was.
Okay.
Also would like to get my hands on the actual decision so that I can read the language for myself of what was signed off upon and filed. I do remember discussions about the public access. When we were talking about the subdivision, there was mention of the bridge that had been there already as part of the country club and the golf space. So there was a lot of talk about that, about the paths that were already there and established. So I, I don't think I could make a final decision tonight without that additional information consideration.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, and I, I said this in an email to David Schreer, who's the attorney for the developer, and Jason Mayer now, I've seen it, but I, because we have this cell tower hearing and I'd like to get to that because there's going to be some significant time necessary for that. I, I will defer this over. We will put it on first thing on the next meeting and we will make a decision at the next meeting. That would be, I think, November 10th. And so we'll have a decision there and we'll, you know, it'll go one way or the other and that conservation restriction can be filed thereafter.
We do have one, we do have another one, the McDonald's Restaurant. Revision to a site plan first. They've been, they've been scheduled, so it'll be right after that.
That's fine, that's fine. We can, we can, those won't be long. I, I assume this won't be long after we know the information, so we'll put those things on first at the next meeting. Okay. All right. Let's get to the continued, continued public here, 7:15 PM, continued Verizon Cell Tower Public Hearing. I'll just repeat as I did at the beginning. If anybody hasn't signed in yet in the chat, I would appreciate if you could. I know there are some people on the phone. I will try to, I see, actually I only see, I think, one on the phone, maybe two. So we can get to them, just identify themselves after when we get into the comments. So my plan here is as follows. There was some supplemental information that was provided by Verizon that was put on the website days ago. I will allow Verizon to speak, whatever, you know, information, presentation, whatever you want to call it that they want to make about that supplemental information, or frankly, anything else that they want to add in. Allow them to make a brief presentation about that. Then I will get into a few board comments, but I'd like to, you know, have a good portion of this be allowed for public comment. I, you know, frankly, can't think of a great way to do it other than, once we get through this, I'm just going to simply ask folks to kind of sign in that, in the chat, that they have a question or comment and I'll, I will, you know, just take it in order. And, you know, even if you're not, first, you certainly have an opportunity to speak. So don't worry about that. So down the line, once we get through a few of this, I will make an announcement and have people just kind of, it's a little bit of a race, but we'll let people kind of just pop something into the chat that they want to speak. And then I will go through it and allow people to speak. I, I'm happy to take suggestions for better ways to do it, but that's the only way I can think of with the, with the number of people who are participating. Okay, Attorney Fenton. Do you wish to make a presentation, speak at all about the supplemental materials or anything else?
Yes.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to do is start by introducing myself. My name is Attorney Michael Fenton. I'm a partner at Shat Schwartz in Springfield. Our address is 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100 in Springfield. I'm joined by my partner, Attorney Alan Fryman, and our associate attorney, Stephen Sobie. Verizon's full complement of consultants and representatives are here this night for your benefit. We have radio frequency engineer Jay Latori and his associate Kip DeVito, both with Verizon Wireless. David Vivian, who's with Structure Consulting Group, and he's our leasing specialist. We also have Dean Gustafson, who's with All Points Technologies, and he is our wetlands consultant. Last but not least, we have our engineer with Hudson Design Group, Sylvester Bohemi. So, Mr. Chair, as you pointed out, two weeks ago, we were continued to this night, the Friday after our hearing, I believe on October 10th. I take that back, on October 9th, I submitted a first set of supplemental materials to the board, which I'd like an opportunity to just summarize right now and then we can have our relevant consultants walk through each of those materials. So what was submitted to you was an updated engineering necessity case. This document bolsters Verizon Wireless's written testimony on radio frequency based on questions from the planning board at the last hearing. Specifically, the record has been updated to include the following. User data is now included. Radio frequency maps have been reshaded to provide a better contrast for visual purposes to the board. The maps have also been expanded to show coverage to the south in Connecticut as well as into the west for Agwam, which was a request. Additional radio frequency maps were included to show the impact that a potential, and I want to stress potential, Agwam North Site at the Agwam Municipal Golf Course could have on coverage in the area. That was another question we received from the board. Verizon Wireless's radio frequency engineer added a written description of recent equipment in town that's been upgraded at existing Verizon facilities and complimented that with an explanation of what impact those equipment upgrades has had on service and why nevertheless Verizon requires a macro monopole installation at its proposed location. Also submitted to you was a statement regarding small cell feasibility. We start responding to questions as to whether or not small cell equipment could be deployed on utility poles to alleviate the data and voice coverage gap issue. We also submitted revised zoning drawings. The revised zoning drawings show the dimensions of the platform for the antennas, which board members were inquiring about at the last hearing. And it also shows additional details regarding the clearing necessary for the gravel access road and our equipment compound. Additionally, we submitted an overlay map and statement of alternative facilities. And I expect that this will be the document that is the most interest to the board and we'd be happy to have Verizon's consultant speak to that in a moment. Lastly, in our, on our submission that was submitted on the 9th was a summary of environmental effects. That document was prepared by All Points Technologies summarizing the environmental due diligence that Verizon as an FCC license holder goes through for each and every site before we can proceed with construction. So that was the first set of supplemental materials and I'm going to call on my colleagues and teammates to walk the board through each of those items. But before I do that, I also want to reference two other items, Mr. Chair, of follow-up. I had the opportunity to speak with Chief Bishop and receive some materials from him regarding the equipment that the town's consultant for DPW and for public safety would like to see on the tower. It is speculative at this point because I understand it's subject to appropriation. But we do have the schematics for those pieces of equipment and our consultants are prepared to discuss them with you if that's of interest to the board. Additionally, yesterday, I sent a letter to the planning department and the chair of the board from an arborist that Verizon engaged, Cotton Tree Surveyors, who completed a review of the area and the condition of the trees and vegetation and who advised based on the status of the health of this forest and the proposed utility access road of twelve feet in width, that clearing of twenty feet in width is proposed by the arborist to open up the forest and address some of the spoken to symptoms of disease existing in the forest. And so that would mean, to answer some questions that were brought up at the last meeting, that in addition to the 12-foot road, there would be four feet of clearing on either side. It is just a preliminary report and a tree surveyor will be going back out to the site later this week, actually, to complete a full tree survey so that at the appropriate time, we can submit zoning drawings that show with more precision the amount of required tree removal.
And if I could just interrupt you for one minute, just as a procedural point. As you said, that came in, was it yet, was it yesterday? So it is, it has been added to the supplemental Verizon material that is, that there is a link for on the website. It is the last page of that document. There wasn't a new document created, so if you went to that website prior to yesterday, you probably didn't see that last page. It's now been added to it. So, sorry about that. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarifying that and making sure that we have a complete public record. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our teammates with Verizon. I'd like to start with Jay Latori, who's a radio frequency engineer. And Jay will be able to speak to you about the supplemental materials that he submitted. So Jay, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen and, and walking the board through some of the changes to your updated engineering necessity case, the small cell feasibility statement, and then to the extent of your expertise, the overlay map and statement regarding alternative facilities.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the public. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, sir, I'll share my screen.
Yeah, can I set it up so that you're able to or do I need to do that?
Well, right now it says host disabled participant screen sharing, but I, I, I know there's a way to change the setting. I recall that from last time.
Yeah. Okay, try that. Does that work?
Yep, that worked fine, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind just letting me know and you can see my screen.
I can, yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Jay Latori, radio frequency engineer for Verizon. My address information is included in the chat. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak about Verizon's proposal off Liberty Lane in Southwick to enhance wireless communication services in the Town of Southwick. As requested by the board, we have provided a number of updates to our materials tonight to supplement our application. At your request, Mr. Chairman, I'll briefly touch on the changes for, for the board and the public, but I'll certainly be available throughout the evening to talk about any of these matters in, in any level of detail you'd like. On our project need overview page two, based on, on comments from the public and from the board, we did add some additional narrative here to further explain a couple of things. One was, you know, the, some of the areas that will be improved within the Town of Southwick and we identified some of the specific roads that will be enhanced by this proposed facility. We went into a little more of a narrative to explain why there is value in deploying, you know, this proposed facility to eliminate the coverage gap and also to address insufficient levels of service, not only in the, in the day-to-day, you know, times where performance is suffering this part of Southwick, but also when there are high concentrations of people in, in town, whether it be for events, whether it be for school and things of that nature. So these wireless facilities, you know, are designed to support, you know, traffic that can be somewhat irregular week to week. There was a question, I don't recall if it was from the board or members of the public about, you know, some of our existing facilities in town and whether or not we had completed any, you know, upgrades recently and how that impacted, you know, performance. We did look at our records and of the three facilities that are within the Town of Southwick today that Verizon is installed on, we have completed upgrades on two of them within the last year. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to just step away from this for a second and just show a map here because I'm afraid if I just call them by the name of the sites that Verizon calls them, it might not be as helpful to the board. So I'm showing Google Earth here really quickly and
If it's of any help, we, at least around the board, I think most people refer to them as the one at the transfer station, which is down south there, the one at Tannery Road, which is up north, and then the one at Congamon, but
Thank you. Nope, that, that's helpful. So I think you said this facility here at the bottom is, is the transfer station. This facility was upgraded in November of 2019. And then this facility here, and, and I apologize, you said it was on Tannery Road, Mr. Chairman. This facility was upgraded in, in February of 2020. The third facility, which as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, near Congamon, hasn't undergone any upgrades, you know, currently. But again, you know, our testimony will be that that's, you know, immaterial to the need for the proposed facility, but again, I, I did want to make sure that I addressed that in the narrative. Okay. I'm going to step through the slides, Mr. Chairman, that we went over last time and, and that there are no changes on just in the interest of respecting the time of the board here. Coming into these slides here, as Attorney Fenton mentioned, there were questions from the public regarding the there were questions from the public regarding the how the existing coverage was in and around, you know, the town of Southwick outside of its borders. And so what we've done is we've expanded these maps. The thresholds and coverage colors and what they mean hasn't changed. But what we've done is we've just expanded them out so that you could also see Verizon's closest facilities in Agawam. And I always forget the name of the golf courts that this is on in Agawam in the southern portion of town. But there's a, there's a tower here and then there's another tower further south from our facility in the town of South, Suffield, excuse me, that also provides some service back into Southwick. Again, you know, our, our message and our testimony is that, you know, the presence of those facilities and the coverage they provide while they are necessary, they don't necessarily, they don't take away from our, our need for the proposed facility. But I do agree, Mr. Chairman, that having these helps, helps us, you know, better articulate how these facilities, how the proposed facility fits into the network. You'll see, you know, our facility is somewhat in the middle of these proposed facilities, which is not uncommon for wireless design. And if I take a step into the next slide, you'll see, again, the same level of coverage that we showed previously. It's just a little zoomed out. And you'll see the way in which these facilities do a good job of connecting the existing network in terms of the strongest coverage in green, you know, and ensuring that the proposed facility will be able to communicate with the rest of the existing facilities. If I step into the next slide, same exact concept as I showed before. But again, I think there were some questions and just a wish that they could see the coverage in a little more detail to better understand, you know, where some of the areas where we did not have sufficient coverage and how the proposed facility would improve that. So again, same slide, same colors, just zoomed in to better show that in the next two slides. And here's the before. And then there's the after. And I'll just tab back and forth really quickly. But again, these, this was included in the supplemental package that went out about a week and a half ago. As Counselor Fenton mentioned, there was a question about whether or not the potential facility that Verizon is considering as a matter of public record at the Agawam Municipal Course in Feeding Hills and how that would potentially enhance or otherwise provide services into Southwick. And I do agree, Mr. Chairman, I think having the visual is helpful to explain to people whether or not that proposed facility provides any sort of relevant coverage and therefore conversation on this. And my testimony is the same, is that it doesn't, again, you can see here, it's the same style map, same colors. But you, you do see a little more visually, and I appreciate that suggestion that because of Proven Mountain and the ridge here that extends south in separating Agawam from Westfield and Southwick, you're just dealing with terrain challenges where the facilities from one town at this elevation are not going to provide service into service into the town of Southwick.
Hold on one second, let me just. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Again, next slide, serving sector maps, just to remind everyone. These maps are an approximation that show the relative area where if you're standing in a particular part of town and you're using Verizon's 700 megahertz coverage, what sector from any of these facilities you would expect to be on. And in the set of maps that were produced last time, Verizon made an error in its color selection. And it kind of seemed like there were multiple adjacent facilities that were showing the same coverage there. So really all we did here is we expanded the map again so that you could see the coverage from the existing facilities and where they were dominant. And then in this section here, you can see we just changed the colors from the list that we had available so that it was a little bit clearer to see, especially within this circle of how the proposed facility does a good job of assuming dominance in much of this part of southeast Southwick. And will do a good job of both enhancing coverage, minimizing and eliminating a coverage gap, but also providing some meaningful offload to the other adjacent sites. One of the other questions that came up during the first or previous meeting we had was there were questions about understanding a little bit more about how this proposed facility would fit into the, the overall picture in terms of, you know, how, how much, you know, coverage would it provide? How much population it would provide, you know, cover and things like that? And so we did, we did an analysis on this. It's important to note, you know, within my suite of engineering tools, I, I don't, you know, have the means to break numbers down by Verizon customers versus non Verizon customers. The figures that you're showing here are just based on total population and total square mileage of the town. You know, in particular, as it relates to emergency 911 services, in case you didn't know, if you ever were in a situation where you had to make a wireless 911 call and you were in an area where your provider had no service, it's actually set up that your phone will route a 911 call through another provider's service. So, you know, I do feel that showing all of the population that would be covered by this is relevant. So what you see in the first graph, excuse me, table on the top is just an idea of the square mileage of the town of Southwick. And in particular, I provided some detailed information on two of our facilities. One, our Agawam facility on the top of Proven Mountain, which provides a lot of service into the town of Southwick. And then also our Southwick II facility, and I apologize, I don't want, I don't want to get that street wrong. So I'm just going to say the northernmost facility in town and one of this sectors that's pointing in to where our proposed facility is. And, you know, basically you can see the, the proposed facilities, excuse me, the existing facilities today account for, you know, close to 30% of the coverage in the town from just these two sectors. Now, it doesn't mean that these facilities and sectors aren't providing service into other towns. It also doesn't mean that there aren't other facilities from outside of town providing service into Southwick, as I'm sure you all understand. Radio frequency waves, you know, unless there's a terrain issue of some type, you know, will travel in between towns. And it's not uncommon for a town to have some service from within its town and other service coming from facilities, you know, right on the outside of town. And similarly, the two facilities together are covering close to a little more than 25% of the total population of the town. I'd say closer to 27%. The, with the proposed configuration as designed today, and I'm sure you might understand or recall those old commercials, the can you hear me now guy? You know, when we propose a design to the town, it's based on the best engineering model at the time of how we're going to set the antennas and their tilts and things of that nature. But we do constantly optimize the network. And these numbers will change, but our, our best estimates that we have right now is that with the proposed facility, you know, we're going to take the, we're going to take about eight to 10% of the coverage in town that is coming from these two particular sectors away from them and move them so that they're only providing about 20% of the total coverage, 22% of the total coverage in the town as opposed to close to 30. And collectively, we knocked their total population down a couple of percentage points. But the facility that's proposed here will end up actually covering about 15% of the town's population. And, and that's because in addition to some of these facilities losing, you know, not having to be responsible for as much square mileage and population, there's other facilities that are from either outside of town or in different areas of town that similarly will be offloaded. I chose to focus on these two just because they're two of the facilities with the largest footprints. And, and in our testimony, we provide a lot of information on, you know, their performance in particular. I wanted to provide a little more technical information on this without making it so detailed that perhaps the general point would get lost. So I'll allow the board and, and, you know, members of the public to look at those numbers. But the takeaway is the proposed facility will cover about 15% of the population of the town, about 10% of its coverage footprint, based on our models, will provide meaningful offload and help us eliminate a coverage gap. The last two slides here, I believe, on this part, just talk about some of the performance from some of our existing facilities today. And I, and I wanted to include this only because as we spoke about in our last meetings, you know, related to COVID-19, there was a significant period of time between when we first prepared some of this material and when we submitted the application to the town and then the period in which the town was in a position to open the hearing and start receiving verbal testimony. And based on the feedback that we got from the last presentation, I thought it was appropriate in light of the question of whether or not the, you know, there were enhancements to our existing facilities and how they had improved, you know, or not improved service, you know, I thought was a relevant question. So there's an additional slide here that I included to just show our throughput performance on the same facilities that we showed back in February, based on our application submission at the time. So, so we updated that for September, just about two weeks ago. We provide, you know, we took another screenshot of this. What we generally found was that our, our facility in Agawam, the top of Proven Mountain, that's providing a lot of service into town, has gotten a little worse. Our facility in Southwick that is providing a little coverage in our direction of the proposed facility stayed about the same. And the proposed facility, excuse me, the existing facility in the northernmost portion of the town off of College Highway did get an upgrade in February. And it's performed a little bit better, but, but not dramatically in our estimations. And there's still instances, you know, particularly in the middle of the day where service drops below, you know, five megabits per second, which is one of our, you know, publicly, you know, announced thresholds in terms of what our customers should be expecting for service. So, so thank you for that. I'm going to step into a couple more documents here. Briefly, let me just zoom in to just make sure this is easy to read. So there were questions that came up in the last hearing about the use of small cells as an alternative solution to the proposed 120 foot monopole that Verizon is proposing as part of its application. So what I just tried to do for the board and the public to, you know, provide a narrative on this is to, you know, explain briefly, you know, what are small cells? Why are they used? Why are they appropriate? And so I won't step through everything, but, you know, for those that might not be familiar with the terminology, a small cell is just that. It's a wireless communications facility that's much smaller in size than the traditional type of facility. Most commonly in the United States, they're attached to existing utility poles. But there are other ways to build them. You can attach them to light poles, you can put them on rooftops. You can build your own smaller structures and most commonly the right of way to install them. And Verizon is certainly taking advantage of this type of technology all across the country. The, the facilities, you know, generally have an approximate radius of 500 to as much as 750 feet in coverage. And, and that's because they're generally, you know, an average about 30 feet in height. So they're really not extending past the tops of rooftops. You know, they're, they're deep into the trees, if you will, in terms of the canopy. And, and small changes in elevation will kind of trap them in a valley, if you will, in terms of their usable footprint. I just wanted to provide a picture, there's a picture in here for reference, just to give you an idea of what these look like. This is a facility in Beckett, and it just shows a utility pole and antenna that gets attached and the type of radio that gets installed with some other equipment as well. And I'm just going to, you know, quickly summarize, you know, my professional opinion on, on why small cells are not a feasible alternative to Verizon's proposal here. The first one is reliability. You know, these types of facilities are small in nature. They don't have, they don't provide any space for generator backup. There are instances where you can attach batteries to them to potentially provide, you know, a couple hours of backup if you lose commercial power from the right of way infrastructure. Most common thing that happens is someone hits a pole within the right of way and power gets knocked out of service or, you know, the utility company is going to shut down power for a period of time to repair it. In those instances, Verizon's, you know, kind of infrastructure is the last thing that's going to get repaired. So for a network that depends on 24/7 reliability, you know, we often see sites being out of service for days or weeks when that happens. You know, versus our current proposal, which will have a battery backup. It will have a generator, which is going to allow us to provide 24/7 reliable service, even in cases of inclement weather, which we all know Western Mass can bring. Feasibility is the second point. You know, we've provided testimony that we have a significant coverage gap in this part of Southwick that we need to address with a new facility. You know, I did some quick math, Mr. Chairman, and I want to preface it's quick math because, you know, there's many different factors that come into play when designing networks and small cell networks are no different. But, you know, based on my calculations, the proposed facility, you know, at a minimum is going to provide, you know, coverage in approximately 3.4 square miles of the town of Southwick. And, you know, based on a 750 foot small cell radius of a single small cell, we would have to successfully design, lease, site, permit, install, you know, approximately 57 different locations. If you just take the, the amount of coverage we're going to provide from this one facility and split it up into a standard size. And, you know, obviously, you know, if we're unable to, you know, find areas where we can install small cells, you know, infrastructure in the right of way isn't always available. There may be permitting concerns, there may be concerns of getting power. Those customers in this part of town would be denied enhanced services. Or, you know, may have service, you know, outdoors, but may not have improved service indoors or on the roads. And our proposed facility is going to greatly, you know, eliminate, minimize that coverage gap, enhance quality of service, and we can do it all from one location. The other consideration is co-location. Again, the town bylaw, you know, does reference the need for proposed facilities to provide for co-location. Our facility will do that. You know, we look forward to, as Counselor Fenton mentioned, to working with the various municipal departments on their attachments should we be approved. And our facility will also provide for space for additional co-locators. This, this small cell infrastructure, you know, really does not provide for any meaningful co-location opportunities. So it means that other carriers in the area that want to enhance service in Southwick, you know, similarly will, you know, have to go out and, and find their own solution, whether that be another tower, whether that be, you know, you know, small cells strewn across town. And, and again, there, you know, our testimony is, there's no, you know, guarantee that that is a feasible alternative, if anything. If, if anything, uh, you know, we deem it infeasible for the information we provided above. And, you know, our proposal allows for co-location.
Okay.
Um, and is, you know, consistent with that idea of, um, minimizing the number of facilities in town and, and encouraging, you know, the other providers of service to co-locate on structures. So, uh, for that reason, we conclude in our testimony is that the traditional structure that we are proposing is the only appropriate and feasible solution. Um, let's see here. Um, okay. Um, I'm going to step into, um, this map now, Mr. Chairman. Um, but this is going to take just a minute to load. This is the updated overlay map that I wanted to provide. So I just wanted to talk about one thing to preface this. Um, so I, I want to thank the town, um, for working with us the last two weeks for getting us, um, a higher resolution image of the, um, of the wireless, uh, Communications District Service Overlay Map. Uh, you know, I was looking back at all my files as we were asked to do additional due diligence, and I, I think I found that my first reference of this particular map was from 2015. Uh, and it was, uh, someone on our team going to Town Hall and taking a picture of, uh, of one of these maps, which I think is on a wall somewhere. And, and I had a couple of additional low-resolution maps, um, that we had referenced for some time. Um, so, so thank you for those of us getting that information to us. Um, I also wanted to share, Mr. Chairman, and, and members of the board, you know, something that, you know, you, you might find interesting. It's, it's something that we work through. It doesn't materially change our conclusions, our need for the facility, or, um, you know, any, uh, assessment of any proposed parcels. But I know there were a lot of questions about other parcels in the overlay district, particularly some of these larger parcels on, on Feeding Hills Road. And one of the things we found, Mr. Chairman, is that, um, on the online GIS maps, there's a lot of instances where the Wireless Communications, uh, Overlay District doesn't seem to line up with the GIS in, in ta, uh, in parcel lines. And you see a lot of instances where the shapes of the overlay district, um, you know, kind of circumventing between different pieces, um, uh, between different parcels and kind of jumping in between some of these larger parcels with, with the backs or the fronts of certain residential properties. And we, we kind of found this consistently a, across our review of all of this. But what we were able to do, Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of our testimony was to really, you know, dig in deep into some of these, you know, closer views on the overlay map from two thousand and one, which, you know, does a better job of showing how, um, you know, we believe the intent is for the overlay district to, to line up equally with the parcel lines. So, um, you know, our, our, it's not changing our testimony, but, you know, I, I know there were some questions last time, you know, whether or not, you know, this was, you know, other parcels were taken into, you know, consideration. Uh, they were, and, and we'll provide that testimony. But I, I just wanted to bring it into the public record because, um, you know, it, it, it did, you know, in our instance, you know, provide us some challenges with just making sure that we were properly showing, um, your overlay district, uh, in our analysis maps, because it certainly does impact, um, you know, the, um, analysis that we're providing here. Okay. Um, here's the updated, uh, wireless overlay map, um, that we see here, um, tonight. Uh, and there are a number of updates that we provided, um, you know, based on the feedback of, of the, the board, uh, and others in the community. Um, again, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, based on your feedback, we zoomed this map out a little bit, uh, just so you could see some of those proposed same facilities that we mentioned in the town of Agawam, uh, and in the town of Suffield, Connecticut, so you could get a feel for some of those, um, parcels. We, we also, again, you know, based on the feedback and additional due diligence, looking at the GIS, looking at the PDF map of the overlay district, we were, we, we feel confident we were able to, uh, more properly articulate, um, the overlay districts, um, on, on these maps and, and show and provide testimony that they were taken into consideration. Um, just to, again, orient you to this map, um, the, the red shapes, uh, that, you know, look like three pi shapes are all of Verizon's existing facilities. Um, n- not only in Southwick, but in Agawam and in Suffield as well. Uh, the blue shape is the proposed facility on the subject parcel, which is in the overlay district. Uh, all the other facilities are, are names with, um, uh, you know, Verizon's name for them and coordinates are provided. Uh, and the other piece we added in this, uh, is we drew these one point five mile circles around each of the existing facilities, uh, to try and demonstrate a, a little bit more about what goes into the site acquisition process, the RF design process, and all the things that Counselor Fenton mentioned, uh, in terms of, you know, what goes into proper wireless siting. And what we were trying to demonstrate here is that, um, kind of defining the area for where, you know, best to cite a wireless communications facility, you know, depends in, in large part on first defining where your existing facilities are and where they're providing, you know, a, a, a level of service, um, that you deem, you know, acceptable enough that, um, there, there isn't much of a, there isn't, it doesn't make sense. Not good engineering principle to try and build a facility in that area. And what we found when we, we looked at this and as we have been looking at this is, you know, not, not uncommon for, uh, a town of Southwick's size and population, you know, the facilities at a minimum are all spaced out, uh, a minimum of, of one point five miles apart from one another. Some of them might be, you know, one point seven miles apart. Some of them might be closer to three miles apart. Um, but they, they all have that minimum separation. And, and, uh, you know, one point five miles isn't a, uh, a fixed number in our industry for, for facility, you know, separation. But, you know, that's because every town is a little different. Every neighborhood is a little, we have to look at the topographical features. We have to look at the existing site infrastructure and our ability to upgrade it. Um, we have to look at, you know, the overlays and, and for all the other region, reasons, um, you know, Counselor, uh, Fenton and the rest of the team has mentioned, uh, you know, there are a number of parcels, um, along, um, um, uh, Route fifty-seven, uh, Feeding Hills Road. Um, just wanted to make sure I got the road name right. Um, that, that, yes, they, they are in the overlay district. Verizon did, um, review them. Um, there are some of them that, um, could, based on parcel size, meet the, uh, setback requirements, but they're, they're just simply too close to existing facilities to, you know, um, you know, have a, a real conversation about whether or not they could, uh, provide, you know, um, a coverage, uh, you know, solution. There, there would be too much overlapping coverage and, and not enough new coverage, and in particular, not enough new coverage in the areas that are experiencing a coverage gap, um, to, um, you know, consider them as, as part of a potential RF design solution. They, they just don't meet all the needs that this part of the town of Southwick requires. Uh, they won't effectively, um, insufficiently enough, you know, achieve the, um, capacity offload and, you know, eliminate inefficient service, and they won't provide the, uh, coverage gap solution that we need. Um, so that's, just speaks generally to some of these parcels, um, you know, that including, um, I think Powder Hill Middle School, Southwick High School, a couple of open raw land parcels along Feeding Hills Road. And then, um, Mr. Chairman, you know, we all, and I'm just going to go back to the, um, this view here for the GIS. And, and again, as I mentioned, um, you know, the, the, the way on the GIS, the parcel lines line up with the wireless telecommunications overlay district lines are a little irregular, but, you know, again, going back to this map and, and really looking at it, you know, we feel comfortable that we've done the due diligence and that we understand the intent of this map. And, you know, looking at all of these particular parcels in here, i- it became very clear to us that all of the parcels in this particular area that are part of the wireless communications, uh, overlay district just don't meet the setback requirements. And, and I'll ask Attorney Fenton to just correct me if I have everything wrong. But, you know, again, you know, we're, we're, you know, required to look at, you know, parcels in the wireless communications overlay district. Um, we're required to cite a facility that, um, can achieve a three and a half times, uh, setback from, you know, a residential lot line. Um, and I, and I know we have some additional requirements of at least one or one and a half times setback. Um, and, and Counselor Fenton, if you just want to jump in really quick, um, and, and clarify those for me, I just don't want to say anything incorrect on that one.
Yeah, but the, the main setbacks are three and a half times the tower height from every residential lot line or residential structure, and one and a half times, uh, the height of the tower from any other non-residential lot line. So, um, Mr. Latori's testimony is that we've reviewed all of the overlay parcels as shown on the approved overlay map, uh, in this corridor and in our search ring for coverage, and there is not a single one of them that could comply with those setback requirements.
Right. Thank you, Attorney Fenton. Um, and then, uh, in addition, um, Mr. Chairman, just to wrap up, as I, as I mentioned before, um, and, and Counselor Fenton mentioned before, we, we did, um, provide a robust statement regarding some of these alternative, uh, facilities. And I just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, for, for open transparency, um, you know, as we were working to put together this analysis, uh, as you might imagine, it's, it's a, a little challenging to, to, you know, look at the GIS map, um, and compare it to the, um, the PDF map. Uh, you know, one of the things we noticed, for example, is that based on the PDF map, because, um, you know, it, it was produced, I, I think in April of, uh, twenty tw- of two thousand and one, that seems like looking at the GIS map, and, and I'm not a land use expert, but it seems like we found a number of instances that maybe the, the parcel lines have shifted in, in the last twenty years, maybe just because of subdivisions of land or combining of land. Um, and so we had a couple instances that I believe I've documented that, um, where, you know, a couple of parcels that we thought were in the overlay district and we considered them, you know, um, as part of our analysis. We looked back and, you know, after talking more about it, we don't act, they're not actually in the overlay district. And we had a couple other small instances where we thought that maybe only a piece of the parcel was in the overlay district. And then looking at the PDF in closer view, we concluded it, it is in the overlay district. But in those instances, um, you know, we found that the, um, the setbacks, you know, could not be met with a, a tower, even, you know, we were looking at even if the tower was shorter in height, could we do it? And we just found that wasn't the case. So, um, that information has, has been provided to you. Uh, like I said, we did have a couple edits after really trying to go through this in the fine-tooth comb, analyzing the GIS map, analyzing the PDF, you know, the overlay map, which is the map of record, uh, and providing the best possible testimony and information as to our due diligence of these proposed facilities. Um, uh, Attorney Fenton, I think that covers everything for me, but I, I just want to pause in case there was anything else you wanted me to speak to. But I think I, I've touched on all of the items I've had, so, um, yeah.
Thank you very much, Jay. That was, that was excellent. I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Chair, we, there are two other documents that we submitted. I, I don't know that, um, we need to go over them in the same level of detail unless members of the board have questions. But the only other two, um, documents which we submitted as supplements are, uh, those revised zoning drawings, um, showing the additional dimensions of the platform for the antennas with the additional specificity on the access road, uh, and then the statement about environmental due diligence. So, um, rather than take up any of the board's time and opportunity for other public testimony, um, we, uh, welcome comments and, uh, uh, comments from the board and happy to entertain any questions you might have. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. Said to myself, I'm going to...
You're back on mute.
Okay. Let me, um... Okay. Let me turn it over to the board members if they have any questions. Um, we will, why don't we just go down the line? Marcus, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, Dick, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no.
Um, Dave Sutton?
Not at this time, no.
Jessica?
I'm all set at the moment.
Okay. Uh, let me just add, a- ask a few questions and then we'll try to get into the public questions and comments. Um, so why don't I just have people right now go into the chat and just indicate whether they want to, um, ask a question or make a comment, and I will, you know, go in that order. Um, so, a couple of things that I just noted down here. Um, and I may ask Jay if you can go back to that, the documents, but let's just see what the, see where these go. Um, you have that table in there about, um, you know, percentage as a population and, and things like that that are being impacted. I, I, I didn't quite understand when you were explaining it about, um, how you calculated the percentage of the total population. Was that just, you found a percentage and then you multiplied it by the population in town? Or was that, did you actually look at number of houses and residents and things like that that were in the, in the, you know, area that you were, uh, considering that was, that was being affected by the tower?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Chairman. I, I think it would be helpful if I shared my screen again, just so I can bring that up for, for the benefit of everyone.
Appreciate it.
So I'll share again, and you can just let me know if you see my screen?
Yep.
All right. Uh, let me just maximize it, okay? So, um, this analysis was done in our, um, wireless design planning tool. It's called ATOLL, uh, A-T-O-L-L. Um, what I did to start with is, um, I, I pulled in GIS information on the, uh, town borders of the, the town of Southwick and, and pulled that in to kind of establish my area of interest. Uh, and then I also pulled in, um, um, I, you'll have to forgive me. I wasn't sure if it was the twenty-ten U.S. Census or an updated census file from, um, twenty-sixteen. But I pulled in, um, a census file that Verizon maintains, um, which includes information on, you know, total population as well as a total number of households. Um, for the purpose of this analysis, I only looked at total population. Um, I thought that was sufficient for our need of kind of explaining, um, you know, how the proposed facility will provide an impact to residents. Um, and then, so from there, what I did was, uh, I, I pretty much made a map similar to what you show, what I showed here, the serving sector map, to kind of show, um, where each facility is covering. And, and this is a great way to kind of understand what the potential offload will be, because, um, in a way, this kind of treats everything fairly, right? So, so every facility is documented, uh, ev- uh, their locations are documented, their antenna heights and their orientations and their powers. And, and, uh, the tool takes into account how certain facilities are going to be impacted by the topographical features of the town. Um, and then what I did was basically, well, you know, the, the conversation here, um, is about, you know, what is this facility going to do for the residents of Southwick? You know, as I testified previously, there are facilities outside of town that provide, you know, some service into town. Um, there are facilities in the town of Southwick that provide service into either, you know, Westfield or, or Suffield and, uh, you know, m- maybe even parts of Granville. Um, and that's common with wireless design. But I wanted to try and provide, uh, testimony on how this would affect Southwick. So what I did was I, I ran the same type of plot. It's not included in... So what I did was I, I ran the same type of plot. It's not included in here, just want to include the numbers, but I, I said, just show me what these facilities are providing for service in terms of the total square miles within the borders of Southwick. So I excluded from this analysis, you know, any um coverage or population um that any of these facilities existing or proposed might assume as the dominant source um from outside of town, just so we could kind of do a focus comparison. And, and that's how um I came up with these initial numbers regarding uh two of the facilities in particular um that are providing, you know, service into town. And, and just to come back, this map, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of explain the rationale here, um, these two facilities here, Agawam site on top of Proven Mountain in the Southwick Two site, um, on, uh, off of Route two oh two, and I apologize, I keep forgetting the name of that road, um, but the northernmost facility, um, these are the ones that are really providing the most, you know, service into this part of Southwick. Um, you know, the, the lower uh site at the transfer station is, is, is too far away to provide, you know, meaningful service in this area. Uh, the Suffield site does provide some service, but as you can see, the, the way these, the antennas are designed and oriented, you know, the, you know, to provide service in this part of Suffield, um, there's not really service that's pushed directly back into town, and it's several miles away too. Um, as we kind of testified similarly to that proposed facility that we have under consideration in Agawam, um, no different with this existing facility, it, it really can't provide service into town. Um, and um although I included it in some of the analysis on sort of our, our performance in terms of throughput, um, you know, I was, I was doing the initial, yeah, additional due diligence on this facility near um the lakes, um, Congamon, and, you know, uh, as I've known in the past, um, the facility and where it was sighted and, and where it ended up is dealing with some significant terrain challenge as you leave the facility and, and travel east the way the bird flies. And, and so the end result is, I included it in the analysis because it was one of the closest sites, but the, the reality is that there's only, you know, there's only intermittent coverage that extends from this facility into here. Uh, and, and that you can kind of see that in this plot here. Um, let's just tab down, you can see here, um, there's some serious, you know, terrain blocking uh that, that comes in here. So, you know, I, I wanted to focus on the two facilities that really are providing a lot of service in town and um, you know, because I thought those, that would be the most relevant. And it, and it's, and it's not to um, you know, not say that other facilities aren't relevant, they're just, in this particular area that we're trying to eliminate a coverage gap, none of them are providing, you know, a, a lot of coverage in terms of square mileage or, or total population, um, the way, the way comparative to these two are. And so, uh, again, you know, I did my analysis just based on square mileage in the town and uh population in town. And essentially what it becomes is, is a, is a before and after, um, where I um, a s- turn on, if you will, um, the proposed facility as if it was an operating site in the network. Uh, I don't do any changes to the other facilities, which is something we would do in common wireless design. So once we bring up a new facility, uh, you know, we would, we would look at the existing facilities and begin to optimize them. We might shrink their footprints, we might um, you know, expand our, you know, newest site and footprint a little bit, but I wanted to try and keep things as simple to compare as possible to kind of show you what the bare minimum would be. So the chart on the bottom is, is the same chart at the top, we're looking at the same square mileage, we're looking at the same population, we're, we're just looking at how, if, if all we did was turn on the site that's proposed here and, and did nothing else, you know, we show two things. Number one, how is it impacting um the existing facilities in terms of the shrinking of the coverage footprints that they're providing in terms of square mileage, um, and also population at a bare minimum? And then also, um, you know, uh, independent of that, um, what is this site doing? What is, what is its significance of the town when, when we look at, you know, all the sectors coming together here? And, and what we're showing here, again, just to restate, um, just within the town of Southwick, doesn't exclude any coverage that goes outside of town. Um, you know, again, we're providing about, you know, um, it's a, I guess it's almost eleven percent of the total square mileage in, in the town. Um, we're providing, you know, um, at a minimum, um, we're, we're shaving off about a percent and a half off that existing facility on top of Proven Mountain, and we're shaving off about, um, let's see, about six point three percent off the Southwick facility in the north of town on just that sector. So we're cutting that footprint in about half. Um, and, and again, here, um, in these two facilities at a minimum, you know, we're, we're shedding several hundred individuals um that could be using Verizon's service off either of these sectors, uh, greater than ten percent offload, uh, excuse me, let me start over, um, shrinking them down closer to uh ten percent, um, as opposed to, in this case, twelve and close to the fifteen. And we're establishing dominance um for about fifteen percent of the population of the town through this existing facility that are going to benefit from Verizon's new services. And again, some of that's coming from these two sectors in particular that I focused on, some of it's coming from other sectors inside and outside of town. Um, but, you know, it, it is a, you know, a pretty significant enhancement and it's going to go a long way towards us, um, eliminating the coverage gap and also, if you will, spreading the wealth more evenly across different facilities so that the existing facilities aren't responsible for providing as much coverage and serving as many customers. And, and similarly, that the new facility isn't designed in such a way that it's not taking over so much of a geographical area that in of itself is um becoming overloaded. And, and that's a, you know, a number of, you know, the considerations that we look at with wireless telecommunications, uh, citing and design.
So, and I, I'm trying to understand it, and I don't, for any, you know, I, it may just be me. Um, uh, so, you know, I apologize if I'm not quite getting it. Um...
Go ahead.
The, I'm still trying to figure out how you got, you know, those numbers of total population. I mean, I, I, you have a, you have a map that shows you what's being covered now and, and how, you know, how these are covering it, and then you're putting, adding this in and creating sort of a different coverage map. How do you generate that total population number? Is it, I...
Yep, I, I understand your question. Thank you. So, so basically, wh- what happens is, once I generate that map that shows which sector is most likely to be dominant there, and I also feed my tool the um population data, which is basically showing, you know, um, uh, based on residents, right? You know, who's living in what location, what their household size is, total residence at each location. Uh, I can then do an analysis within my tool that says, um, this particular sector is um providing a footprint of this size where it's dominant. And within that geographical footprint, comparing it to the overlay of the population, these are the amount of people that are living um inside that footprint, and that's how I get the numbers.
So you're, you, you actually have data of, you know, you're using actual residency, residences and uh members of the households in those um homes?
That's correct. It's all based on the United States Census data, and it's, it's put into, you know, GIS layers so that it can be uh graphically analyzed.
Okay. So, my next question to help me understand why you're adding those three numbers together is, what are alpha sector, beta sector, and gamma sector?
Okay, great question. Thank you for that clarification. Um, so, um, I, I won't sit here and, 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 and submit that I, I know, um, you know, why uh Greek letters were chosen for wireless design, but um it's, it's a common protocol in, in the industry that each individual sector face is given a, a Greek letter to distinguish them um from each other. So what I've shown here on the map are the uh three sector faces of antennas and radios that will be deploying on the platform at the top of the tower. Uh, each um sector has um the same effective uh radio capacity, that's going to have the same amount of antennas, um, and, and similar antennas in all three sectors. Um, how far they cover and, and how many people they cover is, is dependent on a lot of factors, including their orientation, their gain, um, and, and the topographical features around them. But um this uh sector pointing towards the northeast is what we call our alpha sector. This sector pointing to the southeast is pointing, is what we call our beta sector, and our sector to roughly the west is our gamma sector. Uh, thanks for that uh question, that's a good point.
So if you could go back to that table for me to help me better...
Yep.
...understand that. Um, so they're basically a hundred twenty degree angled?
Roughly, roughly. Yep, yep, not, not quite, but that is a, you know, the general idea with wireless type design. You want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's coverage in a three hundred and sixty degree radius and uh that you don't have spaces too far apart between the antennas where you'll lose signal. Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, that helps me. Okay. Um, two other quick questions, I hope, and then we'll get right to the public comments.
Sure.
On the small cell issue, um, I mean, just thinking about it, if the issue is, is, you know, car accidents knocking down utility poles or power outages for a significant length of time that the battery goes out, the battery backup goes out, um, I mean, doesn't that eliminate the feasibility of any small cell anywhere?
Not necessar- I don't, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman, because um, you know, small cells are part of a wireless communications network solution that utilizes many different tools. So, um, as I mentioned in my testimony, but I didn't speak to it in here, um, you know, small cells have benefits. They, they should be included in a modern wireless network. And, and there's, there's two particular purposes of using them, and, and Verizon uses them all over the country. The, the first is to uh, you know, enhance network capacity when uh, you know, to relieve demand on, on existing facilities, which is um, you know, what our proposed facility uh is going to do. And, and also, you know, resolving small coverage gaps, you know, along main roads. And, and the most common thing that happens there is um you envision a scenario um where you've got two facilities several miles apart, they almost cover a road perfectly, but there's a small dip in the road. And it doesn't necessarily make uh, you know, it's not necessary for you to build a, a giant, you know, uh, a hundred-foot tower for um, you know, maybe a five hundred or six hundred-foot gap in the road, um, when a single small cell, um, you know, can, can fill that. Um, and, and yes, that's, you're, you're, you're correct, Mr. Chairman. There's also a risk in, in that covering that small footprint, that if there was an accident in the area, that um there may be a, a loss of service for a period of time. But when you, when you're, when your business need, when your network need is only to cover a small uh gap, you know, that there's a, uh, you know, there's an argument that that is the most feasible solution, particularly if it means um, you know, in, investing in a larger facility that may not be of benefit of any other carrier, um, versus, you know, a situation that might be unique to a single carrier. In this particular instance, we're talking about a significantly larger coverage gap of several square miles that we've demonstrated exists. And so the, uh, you know, the, when you look at it that way, you have two challenges, and they both relate back to network capacity or insufficient service, or, and they relate back to the coverage gap and the need to fill it. With relates to network capacity or insufficient service, when you're working in this type of uh area where your homes are further spread out, um, the, the, you know, and there's a lot more, you know, um, the, the distribution and demand for services is spread out over a larger area, um, you know, finding the exact place to, to pinpoint a um, a small cell is um, you know, is very challenging. I, I mean, it, it's different than, say, driving on the road and, and finding a small area where your sub- your service is weak for, say, fifteen seconds, or say, for example, you know, um, identifying uh, you know, a, a downtown area where you have a four-way intersection where everyone, you know, with his businesses all around you, there's people walking, you know, things like that, where it's very clear that the man is coming from a centralized local location. That's, that's not the case here. Um, and so, again, looking at the coverage gap piece is, you know, when you have such a large area and you um, you know, you're trying to fill it with a proposed wireless design, it's really prudent on you to first eliminate the coverage gap to the greatest extent possible. And then afterwards, after you've kind of, you know, um, identified your entire macro network and, you know, you have coverage essentially everywhere, if you have a, if you can then narrow it down to small areas, small little pockets, dips in the road, or, or maybe there's a, a couple of homes that are, you know, really putting a strain on Verizon services, then you can make a little more targeted locale by splitting up that network into more pies, uh, as to um where the demand is coming from or where the coverage gap is. And then you can do the same process all over again, and then say to yourself, do I have a need for another tower facility? Do I have a need for a medium-sized facility, maybe shorter in height, or do I have a need for the small cell facility? And, and that's the analysis that Verizon does every single time they look at the need to enhance service. And, and our responsibility, you know, is to um, you know, look at the solutions that are, are going to eliminate the coverage gap and um, you know, enhance network capacity. And that's what the proposed facility does. Um, and, you know, that's not something that small cells, you know, can appropriately do in a coverage gap of this size.
All right. Um, all right, so let me, uh, you know, I'll turn it over now, get, we'll let the public kind of go through it. Um, I, I would just point out, in case I, you know, we don't get back to it by the end of the night, um, a couple things that I have in my mind, and, and maybe you can address as folks ask questions, but um, you know, I'm still having trouble with the earlier question. I, I just, I can't envision some seven hundred something, you know, uh, individuals getting additional service just to the, just to the southwest. Uh, uh, there's just, I just, not that many houses there. Um, you know, I mean, there's maybe a few hundred houses uh at most, but I, I saw, I'm having trouble conceptualizing that, but I also just, I'm curious about whether you looked at anything outside of um Southwick, because it seems like part of where you're hitting is, is the, is the border of Southwick and Suffield. Um, and I didn't, I don't recall at least seeing any Suffield towers um or alternative locations in there. And that's a, you know, I don't know how it's zoned down there, to be honest with you. I haven't looked, but having, you know, driving down there regularly, I mean, that's, that's pretty and, and minimum rural, if not, you know, agricultural or um, um, other type of zoning other than residential. Uh, there's very few houses heading down Warner County Road there, um, going into Suffield. But um, so I'm just curious whether that's been a possibility as well. But let me, you know, let me, let me turn it over to folks here. Um, and I'm going to start with Jeremy Fear... And I'm going to start with Jeremy Fiorentino.
Hey, Michael, thanks very much. I'm Jeremy Fiorentino. I live at 40 Deer Run. And first off, just just want to make a statement that building a 120 foot tall commercial structure in the middle of a pristine residential neighborhood honestly seems unthinkable. And from my, you know, my standpoint, should be considered a last resort. And as I was looking over the list of alternate sites, I can see that there are nine parcels on Foster Road and Feeding Hills Road that are all within the Wireless Overlay District in the RF search area. And most of these are are very close to the proposed site. As Verizon mentioned on the call tonight, these parcels apparently don't meet the setback requirement, but I didn't see any detail on whether any of these sites are close to meeting that requirement. So I have two questions. Who determines who determines the setback requirement? And is there a process for granting an exception if there's a parcel that is close to meeting that requirement?
So I guess because it's somewhat going toward the board, let me just fill you in this, you know, the bylaw sets forth, and I think Attorney Fenton mentioned it before, the setback requirements, that's very specific. It has to be three and a half times the size of the tower going toward any residential property, which is mainly what we're considering. There's another, you know, I think it's one and a half for for non residential. But so that's set in the bylaws. You know, I do, and certainly Attorney Fenton can offer his opinion on it. But I, you know, I do think it's it's appropriate and realistic to address potentially viable properties that may not be in the wireless district if those seem to be a much better match. Or ones that, you know, oddly, that sort of Pioneer Dairy has a portion of the property in the wireless district and a portion of it not in the wireless district.
Right.
Seems like the portion that is not in the wireless district is much more appropriate for a cell tower than the portion that is actually in the wireless district. So I don't, I certainly wasn't around when that was created. I don't know why it was. But I think there may be occasions like that. And I know there was a fax that came in from Mr. LaCory, who, you know, may very well offer something about his property. And he's been before the board before. So I do think that, you know, depending on the property and how it better meets the purpose of the bylaw, those may need to be considered or should be considered as alternative sites. And the process would be undertaken to allow that area to be put into the wireless district. But, you know, I I would turn it over to Attorney Fenton if he has a comment on that, because I think that that's a legal issue that he may want to address.
Certainly. And thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, regarding the question of whether we would evaluate sites that are outside the overlay district, we would not. The overlay district is created by the town to direct wireless developers towards parcels that the town has deemed appropriate for wireless telecommunications uses. So for that reason, in our site selection process, we focus on the overlay parcels. With regard to the question about whether or not we would pursue a site that necessitated a variance when we knew that there was another site in the overlay district that did not necessitate a variance, the answer to that question would also be no. And the reason for that is, to the extent that there were another parcel that we pursued that necessitated a variance because we couldn't comply with the zoning restrictions in the town, we wouldn't then be able to meet our legal burden of earning the variance from the zoning board of appeals. In order to earn that variance, we would need to demonstrate, amongst other things, that there wasn't another suitable location for the tower. And since we have the off Foster Road site leased to us by the town of Southwick, and we know that we can comply with the setbacks at this location, we've determined that it is the only feasible site in town to satisfy this coverage gap.
Just to be clear, just so you you, you know, in case you want to respond to it, and you certainly don't have to, whenever I turn it to you, you don't don't feel the need to respond if you don't want to. But I'm more thinking of a change to the overlay district rather than a variance for the property. So that's the sort of methodology that I was at least initially considering in my head. That wouldn't necessarily impact, you know, whether there's a viable alternative or what wouldn't, you wouldn't have to consider whether there's a viable alternative. That would be whether we should revise the wireless district overlay to include, you know, parts or or other separate properties that would be appropriate for that district.
We would not recommend to the town that they expand their overlay district when we're able to find a parcel that works within the existing regulations in that district.
Yes. All right. So let me go, and I'm going to try to, you know, keep people a little bit limited to what we're doing, just so we can get through a lot of these tonight. Corey Roland is next. Is Corey on the call still? Let's see if I can. Okay. Well, if we can come back to.
Yeah, take yourself off mute. She just sent the message in the chat.
Oh, there we go. Is that, are you unmuted now, Corey? You look like you are, but I can't hear you. All right. I'm just going to hop to the next person. But when I, just just when we switch to the next person, if you can jump in, you're welcome to hop in. Phil Lizzito.
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Hi, this is Phil Lizzito, 15 Partridge Lane. I was wondering if the planning board was get was planning on getting a Realtor involved to go over the decrease in property values because of the installation of the antenna. I believe when you read the bylaws, one of the last things in it, what for you to review was the property values, something to that extent. So I was wondering if you were going to have a Realtor get involved or somebody that's a professional to give some insight on that.
I, you know, I can't speak to the entire board or whether anybody was going to request it. They haven't yet. I wasn't necessarily going to request one. It's, but that's not to say that folks out there who are familiar with this, who are Realtors or no Realtors, could certainly submit, you know, opinions from Realtors who have the ability to offer an opinion on this. And that would be part of the public record and evidence to be considered. But it wasn't something that was necessarily that the board was going to reach out and do at this time, at least, you know, to my opinion. I can't speak for everybody.
Well, if if one of the requirements is that it doesn't have a negative impact on the property values, don't you think it would be a good idea to get somebody involved to see if it will?
Well, I'm going to have to pull up the bylaw again, but I don't recall that specifically being in there.
I believe it was at the bottom.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So based on the testimony that was received at the first hearing, Verizon has engaged a licensed appraiser to perform an appraisal on the neighborhood and any potential impact on property values that the proposed cell tower might have. And we would be happy to present that into the public record before any future hearing to the board.
Okay.
Can I can I comment on that?
Yeah, but let me just say, I will give you a second. Let me just say something in in that regard. I'm just looking quickly and I'm not seeing it. And I I want to make clear that when I'm, I'm not saying that it's not irrelevant or useful evidence for us to consider. I just don't recall it being specifically in the bylaw. And it wasn't something that was necessarily on my mind to reach out to get from the planning board standpoint. Again, we'd certainly welcome, you know, submission of it, especially given what Attorney Fenton has mentioned, that they were going to submit a, an appraisal of it as well. So, Mr. Lizzito, go ahead.
Well, it's just that it doesn't make sense to get. The town obviously wants the antenna because they're going to benefit the money from the antenna. Verizon obviously wants it for obvious reasons. So to get a report from Verizon, to me, means nothing because they're paying somebody to give a report that's favorable to them. So in my opinion, we would need to to do the same.
But and that's fine. Let me just make clear. Let me make clear what we have to do, okay, just so that everybody's under the same impression. And certainly I can be wrong. So if if they are, people can speak up and correct me. But we have to base our decision on the evidence that's submitted at this hearing. And, you know, when it, when it relates to things like real estate appraisals or anything that has some kind of scientific basis to it, we can't simply just listen to, you know, someone saying, oh, I think this is going to impact my home value, or this is going to do this, or this is going to do that. You know, you actually have to have some sort of professional evidence submitted to support that. And so I, you know, it would be incumbent on people who believe that that's an issue to to submit evidence one way or the other. It sounds like Verizon is submitting something. And if there's disagreement, there would be a comment on others to submit that appraisal. There is, you know, I can tell you, and perhaps this needs to be corrected, but there is somewhat limited ability to, you know, retain consultants and things like that. It's not in our bylaw. We may very well change it to allow that for the applicant to pay for certain consultants. But right now, that is not in our bylaw. So we'd have to be searching out the money to retain these consultants anyways from the town. Not that it couldn't be done, but it just, we would have to figure that out. All right. I'm going to, Corey, are you able to, is your audio working now? Or do you want me to read your question?
I use my phone. Can you hear this way?
I can't hear you that way. Yep.
Okay, something was up with my laptop mic. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have both a question and a comment. Our question, and I'll just give you the page number so people can draw it up while we go do our comments. In the supplemental material submitted by Verizon on page 27, I believe it's listed as document C4, we have a question about that. So while people are calling that up. With regards to our comment, I submitted in writing to the planning board last evening a letter on behalf of my husband and myself. We are at Seven Liberty Lane, so we are steps from where the entrance to this road is going to be. I won't read the whole letter here because you have it. But we cite a number of reasons why we oppose this in terms of the harm it will do to residents in terms of property values and safety. And I cited two specific studies, one by a Realtor, the National Realtor Association, but another by the National Institute for Science, Law and Public Policy, both which state that you have buyers who will expect to pay less for a house near a cell tower, 10 to 20%. So for those of us in this area with homes of $500,000 or in excess, it could be $100,000 of your equity gone. And the second is that 79% of those surveyed said they wouldn't even consider this. So not only are home values at risk, that would be with a limited buyer pool. So there's less people who would be interested, and those who would would be expecting a reduction in their price. So there is scientific evidence in terms of not pure science, but as in surveys. And so I've I put both links in the letter that I submitted to the planning board. But remember, when you're trying to sell property, it's as much about perception as it is about data. So in Mr. Latori's presentation of two weeks ago, we talked about location, 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 important for the tower, where it's also a hindrance when you're talking about the same mantra for real estate. And I'm not a Realtor, by the way. The second is that we wanted to know why private property that was offered up in consideration for this wasn't even reviewed as part of this. The third is regarding unknown safety hazards. And I know there's some federal laws restricting that. But again, that leads to the perception which drives away the buyers or drives down the price. And there are Senate hearings which say that there is no long term study on 4G or especially 5G. And even the American Cancer Society site that was cited by Verizon last week says right on it, the long term effects of exposure to cell towers has yet to be determined. So again, please read the letter that we sent. The question on page 27, diagram, I think it's C4. If you look in the the lower left hand part of the diagram, there it shows the entrance on Liberty Lane right next to our home. And it shows an 80 foot clearance off of Liberty Lane to get to do that road. And we want to understand more about what this is because last time we asked, we were told a 12 foot road. And then when we pushed it, it was admitted, oh, but it's, we're going to clear 20 feet of trees in the woods. And now this seems to show an 80 foot clearance. So we want to make sure we're interpreting this correctly on that page, that you're going to take down 80, up to 80 feet of trees off Liberty Lane.
All right. So before I turn it over to Attorney Fenton to address that question, let me just ask one thing. You mentioned, I think your second point was about considering private properties, but you didn't go further. So I just wanted to ask you whether there were specific ones that you had in mind.
I believe Mr. LaCory has submitted a document offering his property.
And that's fine. I just want to make sure there was nothing else besides that that you had in mind so that that could be addressed.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Attorney Fenton, did you want to respond to that last question?
I would like our team to be able to, so.
Fair enough.
Sylvester, if you could speak to the necessary clearance for the trees at the entrance on Liberty Lane. And and actually, before Sylvester, I I can speak to the health issue first. The Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 and the subsequent federal statutes prohibit the board from considering the potential health effects of a wireless telecommunications tower. It's under our federal FCC license that we always maintain the standards that are put forward by the federal regulators in that regard. And this tower will be safe from a health perspective in every way. So that was the last.
Attorney Fenton, I appreciate the fact that your lobbyist did a great job with that. But that leads back, there's still the perception out there that there are health issues. The Senate confirmed that there are no long term studies available on 5G because it's so new. So you can cite that all you want in terms of there's no health effect. Someone looking to buy my house is going to say, but I read such and such a place that 5G causes cancer in my kids long term. So there is an indirect cost to the the health perception.
Mr. Chair, if there is a specific health question the board would like us to respond to, we'd be happy to, but I've stated Verizon's position on the matter.
Yep. And no, that's fair. And, you know, let me just say to Corey, and I meant to mention this before, at least my feeling, I can't speak to other board members, but and I certainly need to, I haven't looked at your letter, to be honest with you. I, you know, I just haven't had a chance to yet, but I'll go through it and look at what you cited. My my tendency upon hearing what you had to say is that, you know, something that is more localized to our area and the people around here, rather than sort of a nationwide study, I think would be, you know, more appropriate or or better evidence, at least, to help for us to consider. That would be my initial inclination, just so you you know where my thinking is on that. All right. So let's see.
Sylvester, do you want to speak to the access clearing off Liberty Lane, please?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the clearance, we're trying to get 40 feet on either side. It is 80 foot clearance. As you were trying to get 40 feet on either side of the, of the center of the road. so that we can see oncoming traffic. This is really a safety issue more than anything else. When somebody who's authorized to use this new road is approaching Liberty Lane, you should be able to do so safely. And also, we are also going to be clearing just the same with the same area. You know, space for utilities. And yes, so the answer is, it is an 80-foot clearance. And it's a safety issue.
So thank you for that. So you failed to mention this last meeting. And second, my driveway is 50 steps from there. You can see coming out of there. In fact, you probably have a better view where that is going because it's up on top of the hill. There's a little hill at the end of Liberty Lane. So you're going to take 80 feet of trees leading right up to my property line and clear them? How deep into the woods are you proposing to go?
So that's going to be based on the plans right now. You can see we're going to be going into the woods some 50 feet.
80 feet of trees for 50 feet?
Yes.
And you just forgot this two weeks ago?
This was on the drawings two weeks ago.
But when we asked, all we were told is a 12-foot road.
Yes, it is a 12-foot road. And there's extra clearance, and this clearance will also be necessitated by just the health of the trees that are growing there. And of course, the design of the road itself. It will be a 20-foot wide road, and once a specific tree survey is done, that number will be more clear. But yes, it's been 20 feet for the access road. In terms of clearance, the road itself is 12-foot wide.
All right. So let's just, let's keep going so we can get as many in, and there's certainly going to be, you know, more discussion as we go forward here. I see a comment from Ann. I don't know if she wanted to offer a comment or a question. Does, oh, Ann, do you have anything that you wanted to add more than what was in there?
Clarifications. This is her husband Joe using Ann's computer. Just, thank you. So my question is, is a bit detailed, but nonetheless relevant. There are two questions and perhaps a comment. The first question is, the tower is stated to be 120 feet tall. Yet there's going to be a four-foot antenna, which makes it 124 feet tall. My understanding is, therefore, the tower is actually 124 feet tall. It's further substantiated by the submission to the FAA for review of the tower height for safety purposes. So to me, that is evidence that is a meaningful statistic and specification for tower height. So if we extrapolate the setback based on 3.5 times 124, we are now encroaching upon private property. Second question is, there's a specification on page 134 within the application for special permit for installation of wireless telecommunications facility. It has a 500-foot radius. That radius, no doubt, encroaches upon many, many private properties. So my question to the board is, can you clarify these specifications because they seem to be different than what I've been hearing over the course of these last three meetings?
And you just referred back to me what page you were, I'm sorry again, that you were talking about?
Page 134.
Page 134 of the?
Application for special permit.
The original submission. Okay. Yep.
And then I believe within that also, I think it's that report, but it also has the application evidence of the application to FAA for review and approval of the height for safety purposes. And the specification there is 124 feet.
Okay. So I will let Attorney Fenton address that issue. Or whatever member of our team.
Sure. I'll be happy to answer to the best of my ability. The reason that the 500-foot radius is shown on the drawings is that that particular schematic is a required component of our submission under the Southwick zoning bylaw. I can't speak to why that's a requirement. It's a requirement that we show that on our schematics. So that's the only reason for the 500 feet. With regard to the question about the antenna height being included potentially in the calculation of the tower height, that's something for this board to opine on. The bylaw is silent as to whether or not antenna heights would be included in the height of the tower. It is true that our drawings show the antenna is extending above the tower structure itself. And if the board felt that that antenna height should be included in the definition of tower for purposes of the three and a half times setback, we would be happy to adjust our tower, excuse me, our antenna height down by those four feet so that we would not be in jeopardy of violating the setback. It's important, Mr. Chair, that I call to your attention at this time the fact that the DPW and public safety departments in their submission that they made to Verizon for their proposed equipment, which I want to stress is proposed, it's not funded, and it is hypothetical at this point. One of those components involves a 23-foot whip antenna, which in all likelihood would extend in any event above the height of the tower. So if the board were to determine that antenna height is included in the tower height calculation for purposes of a setback, that would substantially impair the ability of the public safety department and DPW to deploy the technology that they've sent us and they propose to utilize on the tower. Thank you.
Attorney Fenton, I do have additional comments and questions, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So I believe that the specification of the tower height is relevant. And it's relevant because there's a proposed balloon test. If the balloon test is in accordance to 120-foot height, then we would not get the right impression of what impact it would have visually. So I do think that we need to resolve this or maximize the height to 120 feet. And by the way, my position is that I agree with everyone here. I am opposed to this. But nonetheless, I do want to dig into these specifications further. Point number two, the 500-foot radius, if I work the math backward, that implies that the tower height can extend. The monopole can extend above 120 feet. Can either Attorney Fenton clarify or the planning board clarify that the tower will never exceed 120 feet? Or there is flexibility for Verizon to make judgment in the future to extend the height and add more telecommunications equipment upon it?
So let me just address that last part. I mean, the 500, and I'm just trying to go back and see where it was. I wasn't, you know, a member of the board when this was passed this bylaw, so I can't specifically tell you why that was put in there. My assumption is simply that it's for scale or for, you know, reference. It's in, you know, I'm looking in here, it's in here in the specifications about what you need to submit about a, you know, scale of one inch equals 40 feet, showing all property lines, things like that. So I think it's simply just to have a radius of scale so you can see where the 500 feet lands. They are proposing you know, and figure out the exact number, but you know, approximately 120-foot tower with whatever goes up above that potentially. The, you know, what I can tell you is that's their proposal. That would be what we'd be making a decision on. They do have, under the bylaw, and I'd have to pull it up, I'm just trying to look quickly. I think it's a maximum of 150, I think we have in our bylaw.
That's true.
And so, you know, I mean, I can't speak to whether if something came up, they could come back to us, but I think, I don't remember anything in the bylaw that would allow them to do it without having to come back to us and getting a modified special permit to make it, you know, to add things to go higher than what they were allowed in the first place. That certainly can be corrected on that, but that's my, that's my memory and understanding of that bylaw.
That's all, that is all correct. We would need to come back to the board if we wanted to change the tower height. 150 is the height max, and the 500-foot component in the bylaw is.
That's just a locus of points.
Right. And it's, it's in section E1 subsection A. And it's so that we can show certain landmarks within that 500-foot radius, including residential structures and other components. It has no bearing on the height of the tower or our ability to increase it in the future.
Thank you for that. So I would just like to go on the record that I believe that we need to resolve and agree upon what is defined as the height of the tower. And in closing comments, and thank you for your time, but I have one further closing comment. That today, the proposition is issued in the sense that the trees will act as screening for the monopole and some of the the equipment. Given that what we've heard today, that 80-foot, actually 100-foot wide swath, right, 80, 40 feet on either side of a 20-foot row, 20-foot row would be 100-foot wide swath, a forest would be taken down and back 50 feet, we would lose a considerable amount of screening that in today's proposal is published in a way to say that we would not be able, it would act as screening toward the viewer sight of the monopole. So we would lose a lot of that. So current state is not necessarily what we would see in the future state when the area is deforested. So in our letter, as you, you may or may not have read last night, but we did outline that we need to take this proposal in consideration of not only the pole, but the amount of trees that are going to be cut down. So the balloon test is just one factor, and I think we also have to consider the loss of trees and vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, could I, Michael, could I just say something?
Who are Alan?
What they're doing is they're talking, they're talking about sightline. And typically, whenever we have a road or subdivision, the police department assists us in getting a proper sight line. And so I would think that is part of the application that it would be reviewed by the police department for public safety.
Okay. Let me just comment on the height issue. I mean, I, I'm going to have to look and spend a little more time with the bylaw, and maybe we can talk to town council as well. But I, my initial quick look at it is, I'm not entirely sure the antenna is part of the three and a half times, only because antennas are included as part of ancillary equipment. And that seems separate from a tower itself. But I'd have to look at it more closely. I do think that's a separate issue than what height potentially the balloon test should be. And, you know, there may have to be more discussion about where that goes based on what's going to be on top of that tower. And maybe there's, you know, two parts of that as to what what's up.
Again, again, Michael, if I could interrupt, the last time they did a balloon test, they ran it at 120 feet. And then as a convenience, they went higher than that to see what they could see at a higher elevation. So they can do, they can do two reference point shots.
Right. So we'll figure that out. But I mean, that's, like I said, while it may not impact the three and a half times, it may impact the balloon test. So we'll have to, you know, address that at that point. Okay, I'm going to go next to Bob Dwayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Dwayne, 18 Deer Run. There are two items. First of all, I'd like to talk about the impact on the property tax values. You know, you spoke about the other locations of the Verizon towers in town seem to be more suitable locations than in the middle of a residential neighborhood. You talk about transfer stations off of industrial road as opposed to a residential lot off of Liberty Lane. So just, just want to understand that the magnitude of that loss in property taxes. You know, there's a number of studies, and I could cite two of them, they're impacting the significant negative impact on property values. One by the Appraisal Journal, actually two by the Appraisal Journal, one in summer of 2005, another in the fall of 2007. You know, for the number might be, whether it be 15, 20, 25% impact, it's a huge number, especially considering the tax base in this neighborhood. I took the liberty to tally up the taxes this specific neighborhood has. In 2020, it totals up $1,379,885. And it represents 5.8% of the total tax value of the town of Southwick. And I guess, you know, I have very large concerns on the fact that, you know, can we take that type of hit as a town on our property, on our property taxes, and ultimately what's funding what schools, et cetera? So that's, that's one item. The second item, I'd like to just follow up on some of the discussions about the size of the tower. And as I think our expert Jay Latori mentions, he characterized 100-foot tower when we were discussing the small cell discussion as a giant tower. This is, by the way, 124 feet. Just taking a look at the setback requirements, again, three and a half times the total height of the tower for many residential lot line, it says the total height of the tower, which in my interpretation means the entire tower, including the antennas. Also, keep in mind, we should look at the width of the tower because my understanding of the schematics is we're taking, or Verizon is taking center point of the tower and measuring it to the residential property lines, tallying to 433 feet. I think that calculation is in error for reasons. So I'll stop there and just, you know, let others weigh in on that.
So let me just say, I mean, I appreciate that comment, and I think it's certainly something we need to figure out. And I told you my initial impression, and actually, as I'm looking at it, there's a section that talks about, you know, about not exceeding 150 feet in height. It talks about no tower or attached accessory antenna on a tower. So it does separate those two things there. So, you know, I guess I, I'm hearing from Verizon though that if we have to take it down a couple of feet, this is not necessarily going to be a game changer by any stretch of the imagination. So I, I mean, I'm happy to discuss this. I just don't, it seems more technical end-of-the-road stuff. If we got there, then it is something that is going to prevent them from going forward. But I could be wrong on that, but that's the impression that I got from what Attorney Fenton said.
That's right. We are willing to reduce the antenna height to comply if the board determines that the antennas are included in the tower height.
All right. All right. Is there anything that you need to address, Attorney Fenton or your team?
Not unless you would specifically like to ask us to do so, Mr. Chair.
No, I just wanted to give you the opportunity after Mr. Dwayne finished. Next, I see Mary and Pat Martin. Again, I'm happy to read your question, or you can speak up. It's whatever you prefer.
He skipped over me.
Okay, I'm not seeing them unmuted. Let me just read it. Talks about, does residential R20 zoning allow cell towers? Why? Again, I can't really speak to that. I'm not sure anybody on the board can really speak to that. That was more, that was created when the Wireless Communications Service District was put forth, which was in 2001, I think.
2000, April 2001.
So, you know, I can't really speak to that, but it kind of is what it is at this point in time. There is, however, I mean, I think we need to be clear, a very strong preference, and the purpose of it is to preference, and the purpose of it is to, you know, try to minimize any impacts to residential neighborhoods. So while, you know, you can, you can call it a discrepancy, I don't know if it is or not, but there is a stated purpose in there to minimize the impacts on residential neighborhoods. So I think that is what we need to be looking at in this hearing. All right, I see, let's see, I see John Griffin followed by Amy Stack here. John, do you wish to have a comment? Or do you want me to read this?
You can read it for me, Mike.
Okay, I just, our proposed site being considered off Route fifty-seven at the Agwam Country Club. Yes, that is, you know, I believe Attorney Fenton can certainly clarify, but from my understanding, they've received, is it the variance that you received and you need the special permit? I, I forget how Agwam does it, but there's, or you got council approval and you need something else? I forget. But there's, I think, like halfway through, and you just need the, the permit from the, from the zoning board of appeals there. Is that right?
Similar to the situation here in Southwick, we have an approved lease with the town of Agwam. We do not have an approved special permit or variance for that location. So we have an approved lease here, and we're seeking a special permit.
Okay, all right. Amy Stack?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming together and giving the residents of Southwick a voice here. I know, at the end of the day, everybody wants to come to a, a conclusion that makes the residents of Southwick happy from a health and safety standpoint and also service the community. So thank you for giving us a voice. My question is, in the maps that were shown and shared this evening, there were three towers sighted in Southwick, I believe, one in Suffield and two in Agwam. And I think I will speak on behalf of the residents here. I'm at thirty-six Lexington Circle. We're very much opposed to this, and we can talk about balloons, we can talk about clearing eighty-foot distances and things like that. But at the end of the day, I would like to see at the next meeting, other areas strongly considered, not just in Southwick, but maybe in Suffield. So that is my, my first statement. And then when we were going through the data of population and percentages and things like that, that justify Verizon's need to put a tower in here, I don't quite understand from a population standpoint, how many residents of the community in total represent that, actually use Verizon as a carrier. So from a percentage standpoint, it would be good to understand population ratio to user ratio to justify putting the tower in.
All right, thank you. So, and I think I have the same question that you first mentioned about Suffield that I'll, if they've considered it, I'll certainly let them address it. But for the second one, and again, Attorney Fenton can probably better explain it than I can, but I don't believe they're required to look at carrier-specific data. I think they are able to use more generalized data than that. But I, you know, certainly will let him offer his opinion on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Latori to provide a little bit more of an answer on that question. And, and Jay, if you could specifically, in addition to the testimony you deem appropriate, a, address two issues. I, I want to be sure the board is clear that the map that was shown is just in the geographic area around where the proposal is. It's not an exhaustive list of all other locations in surrounding towns. So that's the first thing. And, and Jay, if, if you could speak to that, and also speak to the chairman's question about any coverage that this tower may be providing into Connecticut.
Thank you, Attorney Fenton. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll share my screen again.
Sure.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and the public, what I'd like to do with the board's permission is to take the time to put together a, a formal response on this question, on the matter of whether or not it would be appropriate to resolve the town of Southwick's coverage gaps, which have been identified through our written and verbal testimony by the sighting of a facility in the town of Suffield, Connecticut. I'd like the opportunity to respond to that in writing, so that I have the opportunity to put forth a response that looks at all those issues. I will just answer Attorney Fenton's questions and just, you know, state again that these facilities that are marked in red are all of Verizon's existing facilities that create, if you will, in our industry, we call them first-tier neighbors of the proposed facility. They are the sites that, if you went in a three hundred and sixty-degree circle and you flew like a bird, those are the facilities that you would get to first. Those would be the facilities that, as you drove away from our proposed site or drove towards the proposed site, you would either hand into or hand out of. So Verizon certainly has facilities in, in other towns that abut the town of Southwick, which I believe Attorney Fenton was mentioning. But for the purposes of this analysis, as we've provided in testimony, the existing facilities that are already, you know, closer to the identified coverage gap are, are not able today to meet the two identified purposes, which is the elimination of the coverage gap and the resolution of ineffective service, then it follows that other facilities that were even further away would lack the topographical features and inability to overcome the, the sheer physics of a wireless communication system in which the signal strength that, you know, is provided at a tower decreases or attenuates as you go further and further away from it. And, and thus, it becomes necessary when a coverage gap is identified to seek out wireless communications facilities in the area of that coverage gap. Counselor, Attorney Fenton, was there anything else you, you wanted me to address that I might have missed?
That was, I, I think that speaks to the, to the spirit of the question. I, I would defer to the chair in terms of whether or not there's anything-
I, I would actually like to comment on that, Mr. Fenton. And Jay, thank you for bringing that up. I do notice in the radius diagrams here that the wireless overlay regions are noted only in Southwick, but you haven't denoted it in Agwam or Suffield. And there's no overlay radius, really, when you look at the geographical representation when it comes to Suffield and Southwick and Agwam abutting territories. So I would really like to understand that a little bit more in the future.
And I, I guess I, the other, to sort of jump off of Amy's question, it, I don't remember if I saw it in here or not, because there's a lot of materials, but are there any other sites that exist that aren't Verizon sites that you could co-locate on in, in an appropriate area to, to provide service? I mean, I know you've marked the Verizon locations. What I, I, I don't know if it's been asked or whether it's in the materials is whether there are other existing locations where you can co-locate.
Forgive me, Mr. Chairman. If you could just give me a brief second to review my documentation, please.
Sure. And if, why don't, while you're looking at that, Jay, why don't I just move on to the next question, and then we can kind of move forward. And you can certainly hop in when you're done. I don't want to-
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I, I'll, I'll say the following briefly. So what I would like to do, if it pleases the board and the public, to take the time, similar to our, my comment about the request to respond in a little more detail about the areas in northern Suffield where, where members of the board and members of the public have inquired to that, I'd like to respond to that in, in written form. And I would also like to provide evidence that I can submit to the board in, in, in due time regarding the presence of other facilities. I, the FCC maintains a database of wireless communications facilities. I will provide that information and provide the source for that information, so that the board and members of the public can not only review the data, but also, if they are so inclined, can also look at the data source for themselves to review that information.
Just so I understand, you know, when you said about wireless towers, I mean, i- is it, i- is it an option to co-locate on other types of towers? You know, I, I'm thinking of, I'm trying to think of what else is out there. But I mean, there are additional types of towers out there, and I just don't know-
I think I understand your question, Mr. Chairman. There, there's, there's AM towers, there's FM towers, there's lattice-type structures that are sometimes installed behind police departments that are sometimes skinnier. Every tower facility has to be looked at differently, because everyone has, every facility has different considerations. And just like Attorney Fenton provided as a part of the record, all of the considerations that have to come into the sighting of wireless telecommunications facilities, structural capability of a proposed structure, a proposed new structure, or an existing structure have to be considered. So again, if it pleases the board, I'd like the opportunity to, to collect that information. I think it's a reasonable question, and I'd be happy to provide it.
Yeah, no, and that's, and I wasn't, I just wanted to make sure you weren't limiting it to wireless towers.
No, 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 no. As, as part of our due diligence, we, we would look at all infrastructure that, you know, met the prerequisite RF design targets. Thank you.
The next person I have on here is, I believe, Dave. Is Dave on here and-
Yeah, hey, Mike. Hi, Mike. How you doing? Hey, I just got a, I, I just have a, a couple of questions. Looking at the proposal from Verizon, you're showing a, on a plan view, showing the radius of setback at a hundred and twenty-foot tower length. In all your documents, you show that it could be a maximum of a hundred and twenty-four, which puts us without, outside the three and a half time tower height setback. But in addition to that, my understanding is, and ma- maybe Mr. Fenton can cor- correct me, that once this tower is installed, that we are, we have no power to dictate how much additional space they can put in height on this tower upwards of twenty feet. And if, which would mean that this tower would be at a hundred and forty feet, a hundred and, a hundred and forty-four feet, which clearly violates the three and a half foot time measure that you put in the bylaws. So if someone could, could respond to that, I believe that the setback should be based on a hundred and forty-four feet, since the minute that tower is installed, we lose control over it. We, it's a federal law. I, 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 I posted on the, on one of my group chats, but please, I'd like to hear from the lawyers about this.
Attorney Fenton, do you, did you have a response to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We will not increase the tower height without coming back to the board. Thank you.
Yeah, but no, 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 that's not good enough. You don't have to come back to the board. That's the whole point of, that's the whole point of this law. The whole point of the law is it, it, that we are powerless as a community, as residents, as a town board, to stop you from raising the height of this tower. So simply giving you, us, your word that you won't do this is not good. It doesn't work. It's, it's not truthful. And it's not, you can't anticipate what's going to happen in the future. So please respond.
I guess let me ask Attorney Fenton, is that, that's what I was trying to think of before, and I couldn't remember if it was in our bylaw or otherwise, but it sounds like it may be in the Telecommunications Act. Is that, are you right after construction to extend up by twenty feet or whatever distance?
But I, I'm not sure what law he's referencing, Mr. Mr. Chair, but I, I will tell you-
Forty-six nine A in two thousand and twelve. I don't, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but according to the law that I, that, and I, it circulated, circulated this throughout the neighborhood. So if somebody's on that has this on their computer, please chime in. But you have, I, you have a right to increase the height of this tower by twenty feet without any intervention or, I shouldn't say intervention, but without any consideration from the residents or the town. You have the sole right to do this under law. So if you can do that, that means that this set, setback needs to be established at a hundred and forty-four feet, not at a hundred and twenty, twenty feet. And by the way, at a hundred and twenty feet, you can't make that unless you reduce the height, height of the tower. And as far as putting antennas on the tower, if you read our bylaws, it says overall length of the tower. It doesn't mean the overall length of the monopole. It means the overall length of the tower. That means from the top to the bottom, whatever you put on it, that is the height of the tower, and that determines the setback. I'm done.
Okay, so Attorney Fenton, if I'm looking at this just very quickly and correctly, I think what he's referring to is section sixty-four oh nine, the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of two thousand and twelve, and the FCC regulations that implement that, that law. And I, I, you know, I'm not going to sit here and try to read through it at this point in time, but I just didn't know if that was something that you were familiar with.
Mr. Chair, we, we are familiar with chap, with section sixty-four nine. I'm not familiar with any provision of that law that enables Verizon to short-circuit the local permitting process. It does provide particular protections to tower developers who are providing for small increases in tower height. But I'm not aware of any provision in that law that would allow us to circumvent a local zoning process, particularly as it relates to this setback. If the board would like, we'd be happy to prepare a memorandum on that issue for the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if your interpretation of that or your understanding of it is it doesn't allow you to do that, then that certainly would be helpful to sort of, I'm sure, a- address any concerns that are out there. I'll certainly look at it as well and, and get appropriate people involved if necessary. But, you know, if you want to submit that, if that's going to be useful, that would be, that'd be great.
We will do that.
Hey, hey, Mike, one other thing before I leave.
Yes.
If they are go, they're going to need to reduce the height of this tower to make the setback. Before we proceed, all drawings need to be updated. The proposal needs to be updated and resubmitted.
I, I don't disagree that the data would potentially change. I, I don't- I don't get the sense that it's going to change a lot or impact, you know, their contention that there's a, there's a gap there. But I do, you know, I don't disagree with that. It would have to be both the data that justifies it as well as the actual drawings that are going to get submitted and signed off on if it got approved. All of that would have to change if, if the height changed. I mean, that's just, that's the nature of the beast, I think.
Right, right.
Okay, so.
But Verizon has already agreed that the height has to change.
Well.
So all the drawings need to change.
I think we need to work through, I don't think they agree that the height has to change. They have, they agreed that the height would change if necessary to address the setback issue depending on how the interpretation of tower is, is made. And I just don't think that's an issue we're going to resolve tonight. That's something we will certainly be looking at as we go forward.
Yeah, I agree. That, that's fine. We can discuss this as we get closer to arriving at a decision on this.
Okay, the next folks I see on here, and I don't know if they had questions or not, where the hedges, both Sarah and Ryan are on here. Either you have questions, you're certainly welcome to.
Sure, I'll jump in. Hi, everybody. Sarah Hedges here. I think I have more comments than questions, but I will put it out there. Ryan and I were actually just discussing how short-sighted it is of the town to even be putting us residents in the situation where we have to be fighting about a tower in the middle of our neighborhood where somebody had calculated we are doing more than a million dollars annually in revenue. I know my taxes alone are about $10,000, so I can only imagine what this neighborhood brings to the town. So I think first of all, we just want to say we're super disappointed that we're even in the position where we have to be on a phone call late at night, over and over again, fighting for a tower not to be put in the middle of our neighborhood. Mike, I know you've mentioned a few times what the board has to take into consideration, and I don't know if you did on tonight's call, but from memory, I think it had to do with like recreation and not impacting residents negatively. You probably have the whole blurb in there, but everything I've heard so far sounds like this neighborhood and the residents of Southwick are being impacted negatively. So I would say first of all, property values are absolutely going to go down. I just don't know how anybody can argue and say they won't. There's some studies that people have mentioned and looked up, and it seems like those are being disregarded. So that's super disappointing. Like, these are national studies that people have taken the time and are citing. So that's one comment. The other comment is, the town uses that land. Like, I know my kids are in that land. I know that other kids are in that land. So it's disappointing that the town would even take that land away from us. I also mentioned the comments that I've had Verizon for eight years. I've never had an issue with service, so I honestly don't even believe that there are issues with service quality in this neighborhood. I haven't heard one person state that, so that's just a personal comment of having Verizon for eight years, living in this neighborhood. And I think the last point is, I think we should know, and I think everybody in this call would like to know, who even put us in the spot where we're talking about this? Like, I just think it should be in public records that we all understand, like, who thought it would be a good idea to lease the land to Verizon to put this huge tower in the middle of this neighborhood? Because I think a lot of us are confused why we're even in this situation because as Amy cited, none of us want this. Nobody in this neighborhood wants it. And I think we have the right to know why we're even in a situation where we're fighting about this because nobody wants it. And I think we've already proven on this phone call that the economic disservice to the town by lower property values, whether anybody wants to admit it or not, will be impacted. So I just think, I think we just need some clarification of why we're even in a situation where we're discussing something that makes no sense. Because honestly, we are all having side conversations and that's what we're saying. This is like the most absurd situation to even be in as residents of this town and super disappointing with the amount of money we're paying in taxes. I think that's it.
All right, so it's starting to get late, so I do want to, I know Mr. LaCory is on the meeting tonight and he submitted a fax about his property. He's been in front of the board before. I've seen, trying to go through the chat quickly, I've seen his, his property pop up a few times as far as questions. So I would like to get to him because he was kind enough to, to come here and submit that fax about his potential other property. So, Mr. LaCory?
Yes, I've got a 30-acre parcel on South Long Yard Road, which is in the probably easternmost section of Southwick. I'm somewhat amazed, South Long Yard Road is a high point in terms of the elevations for the town of Southwick. I've represented clients and relatives who've built other houses in the town of Southwick on Deer Run, Partridge Lane, and Lexington Circle, and gone up as far as South Loomis Street and Vinny Hill Road, that I've been involved in some developments myself. And I know a little bit about elevations and I, I just find that it's somewhat amazing that you go from the high elevations of South Loomis Street on the western side of 202 to the eastern part of side, eastern part of Southwick where I am. And it's high levels there, high elevations there also. But this is, I don't think you could have found a lower level of land to put this cell tower in. You know, and it's, I drove by Lexington Circle today and, you know, to see the caliber 500, $600,000 houses, I find it somewhat amazing that this is going to be the location for that. And my property is there. I've really never pushed it, to be honest with you, but there's got to be a better area than this. This, I think, is a poor area. And I ask that you not give approval to them. Thank you.
Mr. LaCory, if I could just ask a couple of questions of you, just so that people can locate it at least in their head or if they're looking at something. Where is your property specifically?
It's, it's probably about 100 yards south, south of Rising Corner. And it's on the bend. We have Butt Calabrese's farm. It's 30 acres and we have Butt Calabrese's farm, which is obviously on Route 57, our Feeding Hills Road. I go down Foster Road probably 500 times a year and now I, I just, I still am somewhat amazed that you're trying to put a cell tower there.
Okay, and what is your property, is it, is it zone residential?
It is. It's residential and is an agricultural section in the back, but it's our 40.
And is it, is it, you said there's an agricultural section. Is it mostly cleared out or is there treat areas?
It's a treat area. I know I've, I had a couple of cell tower companies come to me and I've actually signed a couple of options with them. I believe it was Landmark Cell Towers was one. But with my family, just at a busy time right now and with my practice and with my family, I just haven't really pushed for it. So I'm there. I like where I'm living now. You know, we've got horses down, my wife does. And so we're there to, you know, to stay, but I could, I could open up an area in the southernmost area of my property that has a right-of-way, you can see it on the map, not a right-of-way, it's actually a fee interest that gives you access further down from where my house is.
Okay. All right.
It would be remote. You could, you'd be far away from the three or four houses that it would impact. It's not like this particular tower that impacts a number of houses, 100, 150 houses in that immediate area. I mean, I'll just stand by it. I find it somewhat amazing that it's being proposed for this area.
Okay, thank you. The next person I saw on the list was Vinnie Abandonza. And I don't know if he had a question or not, but I, that's who I had up there.
How come they don't respond to Mr. Corey?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, this is Jeff. I was just wondering how come Verizon doesn't respond to Mr. LaCory's request?
We'd be happy to if you ask.
That's fair. I'm happy to turn it over to them. My, my thinking is because they haven't thought about this until right now, that this may be something that they want to consider, you know, for the next meeting, but I'm happy to turn it over and let them respond.
That's right, Mr. Chair. We'd be happy to submit additional evidence into the record evaluating Mr. LaCory's property. I will say that it is outside the overlay district, which is a requirement of the bylaw.
Okay, Mr. Abandonza, did you want to speak tonight? I thought I saw him, but maybe I didn't. Okay. The next person I had is said Craig's iPhone. Okay. All right, let's see. The next I have on here are the Rooneys. I believe I see both Stacy and.
Yeah, it's Chris Rooney from Nine Code, Digna.
Yep.
Just getting caught up to speed on some of these things. In terms of the, the bylaws with regard to, you know, those are written back in 2001, correct?
Yes.
And were the overlay districts also written at that time as well?
The district would have been created at that time, yes.
Okay, because that's sort of where I'm coming in and I think it's sort of in the grander scheme of things and where it might echo in. I mean, our neighborhood and the areas being affected, we've, this is, our whole community's changed since 2001. A lot of the houses that are now being affected, some of them probably hadn't even been built yet. And so I think, you know, obviously it's, it's a little cart before the horse at this point, but I think some of those, you know, some of these bylaws need to be looked at with regard to how it impacts residents, you know, moving forward in terms of. But I also think that, you know, that's, that's something that we should consider in terms of, you know, perhaps when, taking a look at Mr. LaCory's property.
Yeah, and I, you know, and it's fair because I do what you're saying and I think Sarah Hedges mentioned it before. I mean, to some degree, I'm happy to have that conversation going forward about, you know, changing things and whether they are appropriate or not. As far as, you know, what we're doing here, I'm, we're sort of constrained by what is there and the sort of reason why it was put there or whether it can change is not something, you know.
But the, the other problem that we have though is if, you know, this is the location that they selected and that's great and it works for them, it doesn't necessarily work good for a lot of the rest of us. And then the other problem that we have is, once they, you know, while we're still sort of trying to work all these things out, you know, they get their permit and, you know, depending on how it happens, you know, once they have it, it's theirs. So they can build their tower. And if they want to bring it up, do they have to get another permit to raise it? Maybe not. But it's, it's sort of, once they have the permit, once they have their tower, it's kind of a done deal. So that's sort of the problem.
No, and I get it. I mean, I, you know, as I've said, I, I think that the, the way I understand the bylaw and the way I view it is that it needs to, you need to look at the impacts on any neighboring properties and minimize the impacts on residential neighborhoods on, you know, I think the phrase scenic vistas or something like that is used. You know, I mean, there are specific things you look at. An impact on residential neighborhoods is certainly one of them. That is, at least from my standpoint, why I've spent a lot of time and would expect further information about alternative sites because I think, you know, you can't really get more residential than this site. And so it seems like almost every other site out there is going to have a reduced residential impact, whether it's in number of residences or in, in area that it's, it's, it's impacting. So I, I, that to me is the way I'm looking at it. And that to me is the only way I can look at it based on what I'm given as far as the bylaws and the federal laws that are out there. So, and I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, or answers your comment, but that's, that's really all I can do right now. I, you know.
I'm with you. And I, you know, obviously the scenic vistas are important. I'm there, but for, for us, and I think a lot of our concerns, it's, it comes down to property values and what we've invested in in this town. And, and as many other people have pointed out, you've got a significant investment going on here. And we're not one corporation, we're not one big corporation like Verizon, but we represent a significant amount of cash coming into this town. And so I think that has to be considered.
Yep. Okay, so. I see a, I see Celeste and Jack wanted to make a comment. Celeste, are you on?
So my comment is, to people, is I agree we're in this situation and nobody's happy. We're in this situation and I know one resident had said, how did we end up in this situation? And one of the reasons why we're in this situation is going back years and years ago, you know, when the lease was originally signed in 2017, that we need people to get more involved at the early stages of this until waiting till it comes to this point. So I just wanted to encourage people to be more involved and to really make an effort to look and see what's on the planning board's agenda, look at what the board's discussing, see what's on the agenda and do your research ahead of time. Attend the annual town meeting so you know what's going on so you can voice your opinions at the annual town meeting. Because that's why the land was leased in 2017 and that's why we're in this situation now. So we can fight it, but going back to when it was approved on the last warrant at the annual town meeting in 2017 is when people should have been, kind of been listening and been more involved. So you need to constantly, constantly remain involved and constantly remain informed of what's going on in your town. And a lot of that information can be found on the town website. If you check it once a week on a weekly basis, you'll know, reading the agendas that are posted, what's going on. So, you know, and I admit, over the years, I've been complacent and not done that, but I really encourage people moving forward to do that. Because that 10 minutes can prevent something like this from happening 10 years from now. And that's all I want to say.
So, I mean, I certainly second that. If you can, just so everybody knows, you can go onto the town website or you can sign up with your email and the.
You can go onto the town website on the homepage. Everybody has their meetings posted. Everybody has the agenda. You can read past town warrants. You can read past town meeting information. That's why we're in this situation. So on a, on a weekly, even on a monthly basis, read the planning board's agenda.
Celeste, something like this should have been communicated much.
Let me just, let me just say a couple of things. One is, I've told you before, which is you can actually sign up and get agendas and other town news delivered to your email. I do it. It's certainly something you can do. I'm, you know, I want to be a little bit clear because I am the chair of the board. The planning board had zero to do with anything that happened in 2017. So reading the planning board agenda wouldn't have helped you in any way, shape or form. I would suggest that you may want to have, you know, read the select board agendas when they come out and other postings from the town, whether they're RFPs or otherwise, and attend the town meetings and that would provide you with further information. So it's certainly a good advice generally. But I think I do have to, as the chair of the planning board, point out that that wasn't us in 2017. Okay, so let me see if we can get a few more in before we end this evening. I see a Daniella Labaditz.
Very close. Little bonus.
Sorry about that.
No worries. So my question is, considering the proximity of the Southwick wildlife management area and the fact that there's over 250 acres in that property, is that part of the overlay area and has that been considered?
I don't believe it is. I mean, I have to look at the map and maybe someone can certainly jump in and clarify, but my memory from looking at it is that it doesn't extend over on that side. memory from looking at it is that it doesn't extend over on that side of South Long Yard.
Okay.
That's correct, Michael. It does not.
I just hope someone.
Okay. So that's, I guess I'll just open it up. If someone has a, I didn't see any other, anything else in the chat. If there's any other comments or questions that someone wants to raise, I'm happy to listen to it. We have a few more minutes before we wrap up.
Yep, Mike, Jeff King, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
Good. My question is, what does it take to change the bylaws? Let's just go through that, because it seems like that's what the whole community wants to do.
Well, the bylaw, any bylaw change would not be applicable to this application. So that's not something, if you're talking about the the wireless district over, you know, the wireless overlay.
Overlay, so we could put on Mr. Laquory's property.
So if we're talking about that, that would be something that you'd put in an application and you would ask to change the the district to incorporate other properties. And, you know, you have to be a little careful because you can't get into spot zoning. But, you know, I think that given the given, you know, whether it's elevations or rural nature, you know, tree nature of properties, I think there is it's worthwhile to potentially consider other properties into that wireless communications overlay district. And I don't believe that that would in any way be spot zoning. I think it's certainly appropriate to consider other properties into that. So what would be done is it would be submitted and put on for a public hearing in front of the board. Now it would, it would because it is the overlay district, and I'd have to go back and make sure on this, but it is, it is in the by the zoning bylaw, so it'd have to go to town meeting to get approved. But you know, that would be the process.
And it'd have to be a two thirds vote by the residents of the town.
Correct, at the town meeting. Yep.
Hey, Mike, I have a question.
Yeah, Dave, yep.
Yeah, hi, thanks very much. Hey, is anybody recording the meeting minutes other than this recording? And is anybody recording the actionable items that are being raised during this meeting? So that when we go into our next meeting, we have a foundation from which to start from?
Yes, so let me say two things. One is what we're doing, at least in the meantime, is putting up this recording so that people can access it. It is on the town website. And you can certainly listen to whatever portions you wanted to. There are minutes that are being created. I will take complete responsibility for the fact that those are not out yet. They are substantial in nature, and all of us have other jobs that take up a lot of our time. So we are trying to get to those. I can tell you right now, we're not going to get to the ones from the last meeting tonight. I just, we just have, I have not had a chance to go through them in detail. And there are other changes that need to be made to them before we approve them. So those will be considered at the next meeting.
And Mike, I can understand. Everybody's busy. But it's just standard protocol. When you go into a meeting based on a meeting that you've had prior, that there are meeting minutes and there are, and the questions that were asked at the previous meeting are introduced and answered at the start of the new meeting. So it just seems like, you know, we're going around in circles, asking the same questions. It just seems like chaos to me. Well, so blaming that on you, because I know we're in a Zoom environment and it's it's difficult, but please, when we go into the next meeting, let's just have a list of the questions that have not been resolved from the meeting we've had tonight.
So I mean, I can say this for what it is worth. That the reason why I structured this the way it did is because I think a lot of the questions that were raised at the last meeting were things that either were addressed in the supplemental materials or things that Verizon could address when discussing that or intended to discuss. Verizon has been made aware of, you know, that the chat gets saved and those questions can be considered and addressed by Verizon. The written submissions get provided and can be considered, though admittedly, I think I sent those over to Attorney Fenton today. So I will, you know, give him a pass on if there was questions in some of those. But, you know, I think a lot of it got addressed. I certainly, you know, I can tell you, I mean, I have an entire.
Yeah, so Mike, I appreciate.
And I keep track of all the questions.
Yeah, Mike, I appreciate.
I try to make sure that they get addressed. If I miss any, please.
I appreciate that, but I totally disagree. I believe this meeting has, these meetings have been absolute chaos in that we are not recording the concerns of the residents. We simply are brushing them aside and moving the process forward. And I have no confidence that the, that our feedback, the feedback of our residents is being heard by you and Verizon. That's all I'm saying. So for instance, for instance, Mike, the key question for next week would be, does Verizon have a legal right, once they start this pole, that they can make it 20 feet higher than their permit application? It's in, and I don't, maybe, maybe you've got it. I don't know, but that's what we want to know. Because if they can increase that pole to 144 feet, this setback means nothing. It violates all the bylaws that we have for setbacks in this town. And they have not been able to demonstrate that they can even fit the 120 foot pole into this area. It's a very basic, basic question. But we just can't keep kicking the can down the road, hoping everybody just loses interest and walks away from this.
Okay, well, I mean, I can assure you. And I know I actually went and looked online to find out which sections were roughly things. So I can assure you that section 6409 will be discussed and addressed at the next meeting, one where whether you know, my, my consultation with town council or whether it's from Verizon's position on it, I believe he, Attorney Fenton indicated he was gonna address that issue. So.
Yeah, and I appreciate, and I'm not unloading on you, Mike. I think you're doing a great job. But I don't believe I believe we need, we need town council, not Verizon council on interpretation of the bylaws and statutes for erecting a cell tower.
Well, I, you know, and that's fine. And I can assure you that I've had numerous conversations with town council over the past, you know, few weeks. I, reason I asked for it from Attorney Fenton is because, at least in my opinion, and I'll certainly confirm this with town council, is that their representation about the the interpretation of that law and the regulations that are issued surrounding that law, I think would tie them into what they can do going forward. It's a, it's a, it's a concept called a stopple, and I think that that would be an issue that they would have to address, but I will certainly address that with town council.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much, Mike. You're doing a great job.
Is there anybody else who want to say something before we wrap this up?
Yeah, Mike, this is Chris Scott from 35 Year Run. Can you hear me?
I can.
Just a quick question. I put in the chat, Mr. Laquory was so gracious to offer his land up to try to find a resolution because it's impacting each of us in this area. I guess my question is, one of the things he mentioned is that other companies have approached him in regards to putting a cell phone tower there. I guess my question circles around if they have approached him and they're not in the overlay district, would he not be approved? Or are other companies okay with not being in overlay district and put something in, and it would be okay to the town of Southwick?
So Mr. Laquory came, just so you know, by way of history, Mr. Laquory came to us probably year and a half ago or so to, because a company had come to him. And, you know, we sort of set out for him the process of what needed to be done. And it just takes a bunch of steps. It's not to say that it can't be done. It just, it takes a bunch of steps. It's not just submitting an application and getting your you know, special permit if you satisfy the requirements of the existing bylaw. You would need to address the change in the district before you did anything, and that takes some time. That's the only issue there, I think, you know, as far as I view it. It just takes additional time to deal with that.
Thank you for your time.
Hey, Mike, this is Jeff King again. So let's stay on top of that. If we did spend the time and Mr. Corey got it approved, will Verizon look into it and say, if that gets approved, will Verizon then move to put their tower there and not in our neighborhood?
Well, I mean, it's certainly something that, you know, I think to be fair to everybody, including, you know, the board as well as Verizon. There, I think there was some chatter about this, but Mr. Laquory sent the facts over yesterday, I believe, to the board, and I presented it to Attorney Fenton, I think, today, or I forget if he he got it somehow today, I think. I think this is an issue best addressed at the next meeting when there's more time to think about.
I agree. I didn't expect them to answer tonight, but I just wanted them to agree that they will look into it. And hopefully, by the next meeting, they can come back to us and say, yes, if Mr. Corey's land gets approved and the zoning gets approved, we'll be happy to look at moving our tower there instead of in our neighborhood.
Listen, I mean, I think it's something that is certainly worth addressing and Verizon, I think it would be appropriate for them to consider alternative sites, including those outside the wireless district that may be appropriate for it for a lot of reasons. One, because, you know, it may be frankly, an easier application for them. I mean, it may be something that is a lot easier for them to accomplish for a variety of reasons, including getting approval as well as the construction of it. So you know, I think it's worth them looking at it, and I think it's worth the conversation. But I, you know, I think people need to spend a little more time with it before we get too far down that road. All right.
Michael, Amy Stack here. I just want to thank you again for pulling together everybody and I I'm looking forward to the legal team coming back with you know, your response formally on some of the questions that were asked. And, you know, Michael, to your point, you brought up some really good points about, you know, can we spot locations and things like that, Mr. Laquory's option? I just would really prefer that we think outside the box and maybe consider some other options. So, thank you.
Certainly noted.
Hi, Michael. Just piggybacking on Amy. I know discussed this last call as well. Is there any way we could get a more in-depth review of the other proposed sites? I know they're listed on a word document, but I would like to see statistics as to why those sites are are not deemed viable.
Yeah, and this is, and that's fair, and that's something I wanted to adjust before we ended this. And I'm gonna, you know, end this shortly so that we don't, I've been trying not to go past 10:30, which is probably a not the ideal way to do it, but since there's a lot to discuss. But when I looked through those alternate sites and I read them, I, you know, the thing that jumped out to me is I'm someone who who needs to see the data supporting things to really understand it or to accept it. And you know, the term RF search area by itself doesn't mean a hell of a lot to me. That sort of, you know, and I'm sure there's an explanation. I'm sure there's probably a good explanation. I'm sure Mr. Latore can provide, you know, detail at the next meeting about, you know, the concept of RF search area and how he came up with it and and things like that. If that's something that can be put in writing and submitted with more detail on those sites, I think that would be useful, but it's probably something that I think, you know, we will get into at the next meeting, at least verbally. If not, something that's being submitted. So you know, I would put that out there, because that was certainly something that I wanted to address as well. As it seems like other, other folks want to address it. So.
Hey, Mike, you got four minutes left. I got a quick question for you for the next meeting. Could Verizon present us with a demographic report which seems to be standard if I look over the internet on cell tower installations? And how many customers, Verizon customers will be addressed with the installation of this tower? Simple as that.
Certainly turn that over to Attorney Fenton and his team.
Michael, if you're going to be adjourning soon, should you be giving them the next Zoom meeting information?
I will, yep.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I believe that we've provided that information, but if there's some level of additional detail that's.
Yeah, I would say you haven't.
Let Attorney Fenton finish, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And and Mr. Chair, with regard to your question about the RF search ring definition, we certainly would be willing to provide additional clarity on that. And I invite Mr. Latore to jump in here. We want to be responding to any of your requests for due diligence that you're making. But but based on what you said, it wasn't exactly clear to me what what you would ask Mr. Latore to do between now and the next meeting to demonstrate.
So I mean, I guess, let me, let me put it the way I think about it, at least. You know, I can setbacks, right? I mean, I know what those are. I know what it needs to be. I can go on GIS, I can look, and I can figure that out. And some I can just say, okay, well, this is a, you know, two acre property. You're not going to get the setbacks there. We can move on. There are, you know, whether it's within or without the wireless district is what it is. And, you know, I can figure that out easy enough. One property, at least that comes to mind, is the property next to the school where the water whatever it is. The water department has property there, and then there's property in between that in the school. That, to me, seems to be a property that is of similar elevation. You know, in the, in generally the location that you're looking for. But, you know, telling me that it's outside the RF search area doesn't really help me understand why that property is not appropriate. So if that's, you know, an example, when I, that's the one that jumps to mind. That just doesn't really help me. I don't really understand why you've ruled that one out. You know, whether it's, whether it's distance or elevation, or I just need to know how the RF search area is calculated or or something else so that I can better understand what that means when you say it's not within the RF search area.
I understand. We'll do that in greater detail before the next hearing.
Thank you.
But also Jay was going to explore about other carriers in his narrative that he's going to write to you.
I have a list.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm trying to, I I'm trying to put the info for the next meeting, and I'm doing it to not everyone and incorrectly. So here is the, this is going to be on November 10th because the third is the election, so we cannot hold a meeting on that date. So this will be on November 10th. Yeah.
It was on the screen, Michael, and it went away.
I believe it's in the chat.
Okay.
But for folks on the phone, too, let me read it. The meeting ID is 864 7804 3470. And the passcode is 829777. People calling in, the number would remain the same, and you just put in the appropriate information. Again, that's on November 10th. Alan or Megan, I think it's 7:15. Again, we can take care of those first things.
Well, we have two things, Michael. We have the McDonald's McDonald's parking area. And then we also have to do a clarification on the open space.
Okay, so.
Prior to the meeting. So I think it'd be more realistic, seven, 30.
Okay. So why don't we put that on for seven, 30 on, um, the 10th. Yeah. Okay. So seven, 30 on November 10th, um, and that's the meeting ID. Um, as I have in the past, I will certainly post it on Facebook, um, when we get closer. And, um, there will be, uh, it'll be posted with the agenda, um, on the planning board website, on town website.
Mr. Chair, uh, before, if I may, before you adjourn.
Yes.
Has the board given any additional thought to the balloon float and when you'd like us to do that?
Um, so.
Trying to be cognizant of the farther we get into winter, it's, uh, weather conditions can be problematic. And additionally, we have, um, photo simulations that were prepared last March.
So.
Hey, Mike, if I can just jump in and just comment on this.
Hold on, if I could, please. Um, so I think my inclination, based on the way this is going, is to try to formulate a plan at the next meeting for that. Uh, I would like to get some input on that issue that's been raised about tower height and things like that, and, and to come up with some kind of plan as to how we're going to do that balloon test. Um, I think I, I believe Mr. Mogan may have suggested, I think, a good alternative of having two balloons up there at different heights. And I think that might be a useful exercise, but, um, I, I think let's figure out this issue in the, in the meantime, um, and then try to address that issue and come up with a plan at the next meeting would be my.
That's a fair, that's a fair plan. Thank you. And, um, we just want to reiterate that, uh, we want to thank the board for its time. And, uh, we want to be a partner with the town. We have been thus far, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, I'll sing a rye.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Thor, an I.
Okay. Um, so November 10th, 7:30.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just pull up, um.
Thank you for your time.
So, Michael, I have to say, uh, since my involvement with town planning beginning in 2007, this is the most complex project I have ever seen come before the board. And I think you're doing a great job running this thing by Zoom. Uh, I think people should realize that this was really the first meeting where we've really heard from the public. So, uh, you know, it's a long process.
It, y- yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, my goal simply is to make less errors as we go along. So, um, that's all I can really see to accomplish. There's nothing. I haven't really found a nice, uh, comfortable, uh, you know, guidelines to, to conduct these types of things with this, in this setting. So, um, it is what it is. Um, all right. So I just wanted to quickly, very, very, very quickly, um, before everybody starts falling asleep. Um, just hit these minutes if we could. Um, the shorter ones, the first one that is not, um, as in-depth as the last meeting. So I'm just going to share my screen and put it up there if that's okay with folks and we can kind of just run through it. I don't, I think I have the most recent one. Um, but certainly tell me if I don't, I don't know if there were other changes other than stuff that I had. Um, and I have sitting right here in front of me written down rather than here. So I'm going to have to quickly do this, but, um, Jessica or Marcus, you're the two that often send them to me. Is there anything else that you had on this one?
Oh, I think we submitted our changes beforehand. So if you worked off of those.
Okay. All right. So I'm assuming, uh, what did I, I pulled this from an email on uh, October 1st. I think that's the latest time it came to me. Um, but I could be wrong.
Um, can you just scroll through it a little?
Yeah.
My planner, my planner's report looks good.
Uh, hold on, I, I just lost where I was. Um, all right, here we go. Can you guys see it?
Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted, I knew I had to add Spina, um. Uh, I see. I'm, I'm not going to spend too much time on the names. They are what they are. Um, you've got.
Something like.
I'm going to move this, uh, down to the actual. Down here. Um, let me see what else I had on my thing. You're okay with the planners report? That looked fine, right?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Yeah, this is a little different than what I had edited. Uh, okay. Brief introduction. That reads better.
What is the minute underneath meeting is double lines? Someone was not at a meeting?
Uh, let me wait till I get down there, but that's just, um, uh, it's recognizing it as a potential, um, grammatical error. It's not on the actual document. It's just a word.
Yeah, it, it should be somebody was not at the meeting.
Oh, is it missing the?
Yes.
All right, um. Water.
It's a good thing you're an English major.
Yeah, clearly my one semester of being a math major didn't pan out. Kind of figured out that radio frequency tonight. Um.
So if you're making changes, the very last part of that, October 6th, 2020, at 7:50, 7:15 PM.
Go up one line, Michael. The, the last, the last 7:15 of the paragraph above the motion.
Uh, all right, hold on, let me just look back at. Okay, so, um, you asked me if they're notified by certified mail. Um, I had no idea. So I'm not going to be the one who said it, but it was.
You can throw me under the bus again.
The fact, I just, it wasn't me who said it. Um, it stated that they were not, but that everything had been made. Um, but that notice. Typical hearing guidelines. Didn't write this down. That should be 23, one. What is it? E, no. E.
Twenty-three, one.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I got it. Okay. See, now.
And Mike, just for clarification, the monopole is the height of the pole. And antenna as an accessory used to the pole. Cause what they do is they, everything is based on a structural analysis. The pole is designed to be bigger at the base, of course, to get smaller as it goes up top. And you just can't add on to it because it would be structurally, the integrity of it would not be structurally correct.
Um, I'm sorry, Alan, say that again.
You're questioning the monopole. A tower, the monopole is the top of the tower. An antenna as an accessory use, it's like you have your car and your antenna sticks above your hood and typically above. And then, and you can't, like that one gentleman was saying, you have, can they just add 20 or feet or 30 feet? They can't do that because the pole, the structural integrity of the pole is that it's a base. It, what's the concrete that holds it? And it has to go, it has to have, um, elasticity to it and it has to be able not to move. So you just can't go and add 20 feet on top of a pole because it would be structurally inept.
I'll let's say make it to accept that first.
Yeah.
What, what it can be, it can be specified as a part of the decision. The pole will not exceed 120 feet.
Okay.
That's putting my other hat on.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot of conditions if we get through this. If it's approved, I could see a long list of conditions.
Those are my changes. Was there anything else that people wanted, um, in there? And I can happily scroll through.
Now there's, I had a, needed to change under routine business, unfortunately.
Yeah. What is your change?
Uh, the first one, the first sentence is fine. We discussed 275 grand a rope.
Good night, guys.
Good night, Dave. Uh.
What's your, what's the motion, Dave? Hold on.
Yeah, there needs to be something inserted. Say, there was a discussion of sending a letter of support for the update of the open space and recreation plan. That has to precede that motion. You want the words again?
A motion was made by Mr. Phelps. In second, I just needed to approve the open space letter and have Michael write up a letter.
That's fine. I know what you're saying. Um.
I mean, we discussed it some.
Okay, there. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. We good? Everybody all right?
Yep.
We've lost Mr. Sutton to make his, um, honorary motion. He's going to have to step in here. Um, all right. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2020.
Right here, a second.
Second.
Uh, we'll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
All right. Thank you. Uh, do I hear another motion? The Mr. Sutton's honorary motion that someone else has to make this evening.
Two minutes later.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard, I.
Jessica Thornton, I.
Okay.
So does Alan get overtime pay? Alan and Megan, they get over.